You pointed out, we're in the right place, I hope.
Counsel.
Folks, I don't look my usual best tonight. I'm just rushing from a, from a ballgame, so you better be on your best behavior. Verbal warning, written warning, and then you're out of here. All right, so I'll give you, I'll give you two chances. Uh, let's, uh, let's see, let's have some Councilman Larson. Larson, are you gonna do some opening ceremonies for us?
Yeah, I probably like you guys thought we're gonna have a packed house with the parking lot being so full, but it's nice to have, have summer, so maybe we'll just say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I feel like I should say, let's play ball. All right, we'll call the meeting to order and start with the roll call, please. Kay, will you start us off, please?
Hey, Sweeten.
Erin Mann.
Nathan Lawerson.
Norman Larson.
Larry Jacobson and Garrett Mansell, uh, fifth member, sixth member of council is watching his daughter graduate from BYU. He will likely be joining us remotely, so we'll watch for him when he comes available. And Levi, why don't you introduce yourself and the rest of staff, because there's too many for me to go through tonight.
Yeah, hopefully I don't miss someone's last name.
This is why I'm not doing it, because there's something about a microphone that makes your brain.
Levi Roberts, city planner. We've got, uh, Taylor Kilpak here, assistant city recorder, Steve, Steve Ellisson, um, public works director, Tom Dickinson. He should have had a script. Um, city engineer, then we've got Jared.
Pratt.
Yep. Um, uh, street, uh, water and sewer manager. We have Chad.
Can I just do first names?
Yeah, well, I just ask, like I say, this is why I'm not doing it right.
Rod, Rod Elwood, I'm just gonna say your name, okay? I'm not gonna say your title anymore. Um, it's gonna go on for a while. Kurt Curtis, Snell Grove. We've got Ally, Wilcox, Seth. And we've got Amy Johnson. We've got Claire Schenk here from the planning commission.
Thank you all for coming. With this many staff, I'm starting to wonder if there's a mutiny going on, but so you guys keep your eyes open, all right? Uh, with that, let's, counsel, if you consider, uh, minutes from March fourteenth, our last meeting and tonight's agenda that's in front of you.
So moved.
Uh, Norm, you moved to approve minutes and the agenda all in one. Okay, do I have a second for that, please? Kay, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four in favor, none opposed. Very good, thank you. Next, we come to a public comment period. This is a chance for, uh, citizens to non-citizens, take your pick, stand up and address the council. Anything, it's open mic, you can talk to us about anything you would like to. Um, we do have a public hearing scheduled later, so if you're here to speak to that issue, it might be better to take it in the context of that agenda item. That's on parking regulations. Um, if you can't be here for that part of tonight's meeting and the public hearing, we welcome you to speak now, or if you'd like to speak to a different topic, any topic, we welcome you. Craig, you wanna talk to us, or do you wanna talk at the public hearing? It's up to you. Um, so you see our agenda.
How long can it be here?
Please do. Craig Peterson, come up, introduce yourself, please. Tell us where you live. Thank you.
So Craig Peterson, I'm twenty-four sixty-six, south six sixty west here in Nibley, and, uh, it's for the public hearing, but it's about the winter parking, so hopefully it's not a, a big issue. Uh, this goes back seven years when I made a proposal and nothing ever happened, so hopefully now it will happen since you're taking it off, you might as well look at it now, but it has to do with the front end, not the back. You're looking to change it to eight, moving things to eight AM. Uh, my issue is with the midnight to eight AM, so I would propose that you wait until two in the morning, one in the morning, something like that. Where unless you have data showing you're actually plowing streets at those hours, usually it's the morning that the plows come out. Now I know they're coming out earlier than they used to, which is really nice. And I can see the need for going to eight, uh, watching the streets and so forth, and almost every city in the valleys looked at that and many have changed that so that they're going a little bit later. But I would propose that you look at going, starting at, I would say maybe two in the morning. The issue is, you have visitors that come. They're not going to be a problem in the morning, they're going to be leaving, and if you're giving them tickets right at midnight or one or two in the morning, that's really not satisfying what you're trying to do here. It's, you know, looking at it the front end instead of the back end, and, and I, I think it's, it's more practical to look at those who are staying overnight. And if, we had an issue where we had some students that were over studying for finals, and they were there until after midnight. And we happened to, this is a few years back, but we got a ticket that it was about one in the morning, and so they hadn't left yet, and they were leaving anyway, and there was no snow, nothing. I mean, it was a ridiculous situation to begin with, so that's why I was a little upset about it. But, uh, I, I just think that it's penalizing those that are visiting our city, and I don't think those are the ones we want to upset and have a bad name that, well, if you go to Nibley, you know, be careful because they're gonna try to get you a ticket. I don't think that's the purpose, and hopefully that's not. Uh, the only, uh, so that's, that would be my proposal. I know that, uh, I think Providence just went through this process last year. They changed theirs. They went to one in the morning until nine, with the caveat that if it's snowing and they're plowing, it's still in effect until whenever they're done. Which is a little interesting. I don't know how you enforce that very well, but, uh, there's a little bit later. I think there's one city in the valley that goes till ten in the morning. I think that gets into some other issues, but, uh, a lot of them have changed to one in the morning as the start time is to midnight. And so I think, I, I, one would be okay, but I think two might be more practical for the spirit of what you're trying to do. I think that's, that's not interfering with what you're trying to do, and that's plow. The only other issue I have is, you have the wording in there that says, uh, primarily to facilitate plowing. I hope it's only to facilitate plowing, because otherwise that means you're trying to generate revenue with it. I don't think that's the purpose, but you leave the door open there, then it's perceived that it might be something else, but I think it's only for plowing, which is, makes sense, so anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Craig. Um, at this point, we can exchange information, since it's on our agenda, we'll probably wait for the policy discussion then. Those are, if that's okay with you, those are great, those are great points. I'm trying to remember what midnight looks like, to be honest with you.
Well, I don't have the kid at home anymore anyway, so it probably doesn't affect me. My wife lives about at eight or seven. But I think, you know, in that situation, I just think it's, it's impacting the wrong people. It's not the ones who are causing the problems. There are plenty of others that cause a problem. And I think you, you're gonna be looking at maybe some of that too, and that's, you know, those that leave their vehicles there for days and don't move things and just aren't willing to follow these rules. Those are more important.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, email me, let me know.
You can come back for the public hearing and tell us again. We'll listen twice. All right. Uh, anyone else like to address the council on any topic? Going once, twice? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item five on the agenda, that's planning commission report. Claire, are you gonna give that for us, please? Claire Schenk, our planning commission chairperson.
Doesn't have a lot on our agenda, but we approved the, the dog watching facility over by the Maverick between the car wash and Maverick, which is a small building there. And that's gone through, and then later on, we did a workshop on zoning with R two zone and R two. No conclusions yet.
Okay, great. Glad you're working on it.
And so Levi is working on something to do it, and had a good, healthy discussion, but no.
You, you guys are doing great. Thank you for the whole commission. Yeah.
That's correct.
Want to add anything?
Oh yeah, I mean, ju- just a little bit more context on the R two, R two A discussion. It was, it was in relation to the open space subdivision. And whether, and, and there was a discussion about potentially, um, amending it so that, uh, it, it would be advantageous within an R two A zone to do an open space subdivision where it isn't now. Um, so looking at those numbers and anyway, we'll, we'll probably workshop it a few more times and look at it before it would be considered by the council, you know? Or, or we'd hold a public hearing on it at, at planning commission. We don't, we don't have a draft ready yet.
Yep. Excellent. Good points. Yep. Thank you, Claire. Uh, let's move to the next item. This is outstanding event award present, presented to Nibley City Recreation Department by Utah Recreation and Parks Association. Please come up, and I'm sorry, I can't even introduce you. If you would introduce yourself for us, please. Very nice.
All right, so my name is Leam Pell. Oh dear.
Steve, can you jump up and stabilize that or set it in the, the magic spot or way to go, Steve?
My name is Leam Pell. I'm the executive director of the Utah Recreation and Parks Association. So I represent, uh, it's a nonprofit association. We represent about eighteen hundred parks and recreation professionals throughout the state of Utah. Several of which are, um, in this room tonight, so, um, Nibley City has, has always been a strong supporter of, um, URPA, so we appreciate that. Uh, we have a conference in March every year, and as the lead up to that conference, we take nominations for a number of different awards. And then we, uh, get all of our past presidents together, and they, uh, select winners of all of the different award categories. And I actually have a, a couple of people to recognize and an award to give out today, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Um, I appreciate the time. I'll tell you, there's nothing that, um, makes my heart warmer than to see a mayor show up in an umpire outfit.
You know what? I need one more job with people yelling at me and I'll be there.
I think one of the things we like about, um, small communities, I was having a conversation with Chad and just to hear about how all of you are connected with the recreation department, be it coaching, be it pageants, and I think, um, you know, really, that's what parks and recreation is all about, is connecting our communities. And trying to provide, um, healthy, connected communities. And I mean, think for a moment, imagine Nibley City without any parks, without any open space, without any trails, without any city events, without any baseball games or soccer games. It, it's pretty hard to imagine because that truly is what brings our communities together, so. Um, so I'm just pleased to be here and honored to be able to, um, recognize a couple of people, so the first one, um, that I'd like to, to, um, recognize is Curtis Snell Grove. So this last year, he was a part of, we'd have kind of an elite, uh, leadership academy, we call it, through URPA. Um, only twelve people each year get selected for that program. We typically have twenty-four, thirty-ish people apply for it, so we, we generally get to kind of take the cream of the crop and, and they are embedded into a, um, twelve month, two day a month, um, program, learning about leadership, learning about what's going on throughout the state, and, um, and then at conference, we get to recognize those, uh, graduates of that program. And it's, it's always, um, I love this program because I get to, to work with a lot of times these young professionals. And there's always, even amongst that group of twelve, there's always people that float to the top as the true leaders even amongst that group, and um, Curtis was definitely the leader of that group and took some initiative and, and did a great job, and and as we talk about leadership academy, I, I, in fact, we had our, um, opening day today for the group and, and I talked about Chad because he was a member of our original leadership academy, and we still refer to him as the way to do it right. If you want to, to be good in leadership academy, like, think after Chad, so. And, and, and as a city, you guys have been very supportive of that program. Uh, we started our tenth season today, but of the nine seasons that have completed, you've actually had six people that have then connected with Nibley City that have graduated from that program. We have a couple other cities that have that many as well, but it's generally like a West Valley City or Thirfield City, some, some larger organizations for a uh, community this size to have six graduates of that program is really pretty amazing, so, um, hats off to you, and I've got a, um, an award here for Curtis' graduation, so if you want to come, grab this.
You have your phone.
And a picture, graduation, and, and.
Nice.
All right, and then, um, for the awards, so the award that I'm gonna be presenting, um, tonight is for outstanding special event. And as you can imagine, again, in parks recreation, we run programs and special events, like those are two of the core things that we do. So when we have an award like this, we're getting fifteen to twenty nominations for our outstanding special event. And, um, it's, again, it's gonna be an honor to be able to award for your Nibley obstacle run, uh, the outstanding special event. Um, couple of things, everybody always asks me, like, what, you know, what makes the, the past presidents decide on a particular event? And I think, um, the things that stood out with this, um, we know in parks recreation, we're preventative healthcare, right? We're trying to get the community out and active, but I think, um, probably the, the thing that really stood out was the intentional nature by the recreation department to say, we want our community to be healthy, so we're gonna find a way to take a traditional Easter egg hunt and make it bigger and better and healthier. And so I think kind of maybe disguising fitness activity and running through, uh, a really fun community event that brings everybody together. Um, that was one of the things that stood out. I, I think it's important that anytime we look at, and again, especially in smaller communities, when you run a special event, it's not just the recreation department, right? It's your parks department and your streets department and the police department, and making sure that everything's safe and the fire department is coming and be first aid if you need it, and it really is a way to bring communities together. So just the outreach that the recreation department does across the board with other departments, and then as well as other members of the community, I think were the things that, that really stood out, and then just the innovativeness of, of the obstacle run, making it an obstacle course and getting put it out and excited, so. Um, on behalf of the URPA, our eighteen hundred members, our past presidents committee that selects these awards, we'd like to, um, award Nibley City Recreation with the Outstanding Special Event for two thousand and twenty-four. And just the last thing I would like to say is that, um, your departments can't do this great work without your support. Right? You have to fund the programs, you have to, um, back them up, and um, you can tell the cities that really truly understand the benefits of parks recreation and support their staff and the people that are doing the work, so again, on behalf of our association, we just want to say thank you for recognizing that and supporting your great department.
Thank you, Ms. Pell.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Um, would anyone like to ask Ms. Pell any questions? That, a very, very excellent presentation. Thank you for the gracious award. Very, very nice. Okay, next, uh, let's talk about Nibley City Arbor Day proclamation. Rod, are you gonna present that for us, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Did I catch you off guard? All right.
So one of the things that we started about thirteen, fourteen years ago was to become a member of the Tree City USA. And some of the, the benefits that urban trees have for us are trees make communities more livable for people. Trees add beauty and create environmental benefactors to our mental health. Um, trees add natural character to our cities and towns. They provide us with color, flowers, and beautiful shapes, forms, and textures. Trees impact deeply on our moods and our emotions. Um, they provide us psychological benefits that are not measurable. Trees create feelings of relaxing and well-being and a sense of solitude and security. Well-managed urban forests contribute to a sense of community pride and ownership. Some of the benefits of trees besides those things are trees conserve water and reduce solar pollution. Trees can modify lo- local, um, climates. They can lower air temperatures through shade. They can increase humidity in dry environments. Um, trees can be used as windbreaks. Trees can reduce noise pollution. They can also create wildlife and plant diversity, and trees can increase property values. Um, it's been stu- studies have proven that healthy trees on a property can increase the property value by up to fifteen percent. Are you gonna read that, or do you want me to read the property?
Um, I, Rod, what I was gonna do is Levi's gonna put it on the screen. And I'm gonna suggest that we actually don't have to read the whole thing. If you want to, that's fine, but people have a chance to read it themselves while it's up on the screen, and I'm kinda yep, there it is, so, um, and if there's something you want to highlight from there.
So, so one of the things, well, two things I'd like to highlight, um, as a city, we're gonna observe Arbor Day on Arbor Day on April twenty-second, which Mayor and his wife Becky are gonna be giving up trees to residents. Um, the actual celebration throughout the country of Arbor Day is that Friday, which is the twenty-sixth of April. And I believe you were doing that from five to six thirty?
Uh, I think it's five thirty to six thirty. He was in the status report. That's when, yeah, so. And so everyone knows, I mean, we've, we've been at this for about three years now. And if you show up to get a free tree from Becky and I, it's, it doesn't look like much because it's a bare root tree from the Soil Conservation District that we buy. But they grow faster than established trees in, in our experience, so.
I do. I, I've watched trees and taken them from our nursery. And they've been balled and burlapped and I've taken them out of pots and I've done bare root. And the bare roots, even though it's smaller, can catch up to the ball and burlap within like three years and actually be bigger by the, by the fifth year because its roots haven't been cut.
Yeah.
And it just established and grows.
Yeah, so. Okay, go ahead.
If I can speak to that, over half of our trees in our yard are bare root. Actually, I think we got from Becky that looked like they were basically dead twigs. But they're officially trees and, you know, and, and it's pretty impressive how, how other trees we purchased did not survive. But those trees have done very well. Yeah, they, hands down, they're great trees.
Yeah, so tell your friends, neighbors, uh, it's first come, first served. We typically limit it to one per customer till we go around the loop. And then we just, just hand them out, so, yep. Okay, anything else, Rod? All right, uh, thank you. And Council, you see the, uh, you, you, you see the proclamation on the screen. You've seen it in the information packet. Um, again, I don't think we need to read it out loud, but there it is. So this is what I intend to sign. And I don't even need your permission. Thanks, Rod, and being a tree city is a pretty cool thing. All right, uh, here's, here's something a little more meaty, something to chew on. Our, our, our next item of, of discussion and consideration is Resolution twenty-four oh eight. Uh, the proposal is to amend several parts of the consolidated feeds, fee schedule. We've, we've listed those in detail. And Council, I'm thinking instead of having a presentation from staff on the entirety of the changes all at once, I'm inclined to take these one at a time. And if you want to discuss them at that point, that would be a little bit more cohesive. And when you're tired of discussing that change to the fee schedule, move on to the next proposed change to the fee schedule. It'd probably be appropriate, um, though to, to wait through all of the presentation before we have a motion to adopt or not adopt. Does that make sense to Council? You okay with that? All right. Um, this is for first reading, so if we follow the first and second reading kind of, uh, activity that would be, um, ask questions of staff, make sure you understand what is being proposed. Of course, Council has the option to wait the second reading if you want to adopt it tonight. Okay? Levi, do you want, do you want, uh, is Justin gonna present this remotely? Justin, do you want me to try to tackle the green waste? Can you hear me, Justin?
Yeah, I can hear you good. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you both can go ahead.
Yeah.
I'll be here if you have questions.
That's great. So you see what, uh, what's in the information packet about green waste. The contract that the Cash Waste Consortium negotiated with Waste Management uh, last year to make up for the, uh, Logan City's decision to not do trash collection outside of Logan City, did not include green waste collection. So Waste Management continued the Logan City, uh, schedule, collection schedule and fees for the end of last year. And then the Waste Consortium and Waste Management negotiated an add-on optional, city-by-city optional green waste collection. And frankly, it just didn't happen until, uh, halfway through March. And so green waste season starts the first of April. And so it was a rush to try to figure out, uh, what to do with this fee. And the temporary decision that admittedly with discussion between myself and the discussion that was had at the Waste Consortium and with city staff, we said, well, um, the thing to do is to follow the same tradition we've already adopted with Waste Management fees, and that's just to pass those directly to the customers, our citizens. And so unfortunately, the new green waste fee is substantially higher than it was through Logan. So last year it was five dollars for twelve months. And then the first of April through the end of October, sort of once a week collection for one additional can. Um, Logan actually dropped it to four dollars this year. And Waste Management fee to the Cash Waste Consortium is ten dollars and fifty cents. So with Green Waste started, that's where the fee is now as a pass-through. And that doesn't mean the Council is, uh, backed into a corner on that. And I look forward to discussing options with you all. Um, we can talk about the decision-making process that brought us to this point. It gets, um, there's, there's a number of moving parts because of other cities that are involved in the Waste Consortium. The agreement within the Waste Consortium that the same fee will be charged of all cities. Um, that is a, essentially a subsidization of areas of the county that are less dense because it costs more money to pick up trash when there's a lack of density. But we were in this one for all and all for one and, and that's where we're at. So, um, right now, the fee is set at ten dollars and fifty cents per month, twelve months a year with the service as I described. Now, it's not lost on me and it wasn't lost on the Waste Consortium that a second trash can costs eight dollars and twenty-five cents per month and it's year-round service. So this is our dilemma. The way I look at it is how do we try to help people do the right thing, which I'm going to, with a bias, define the right thing to be, keep green waste out of the regular landfill so that we reserve the, you know, filling up the landfill with, uh, with, with actual trash and instead reuse the green waste that goes through the green waste facility. Um, I didn't want to write this into the report because it is a proposal at this point with Logan City. But here's what we anticipate coming, if you want this to be part of the discussion. Uh, and Justin reached out to, to Logan City, saying, how can, how can we help people do the right thing? Well, one of the things Logan City is going to do is make green waste or the proposal is to make green waste look more attractive relative to regular trash because both of them are going up, but green waste is going up less than regular trash. Now, that's, again, has not been adopted by the Logan Landfill Rate Setting Committee, et cetera, et cetera. But it's, it's about a twenty-two percent increase on tipping fees of green waste into the green waste facility, right? And about a thirty-five percent proposed increase on tipping fees. That's the fee for the truck to dump it into the, to the location where it belongs on regular trash. So green waste will be a bargain because it's going up less. The other thing they're talking about, um, again, preliminary information, I'm just telling you what the proposal is. A ten dollar individual drop-off when you take it to the green waste facility uh, in Logan City on your own.
Right now it's free.
Right now it's free, right? There's, there's some things I think Logan probably has to think about. We're not Logan, so we're probably not spending good time on that. But one of the things Logan needs is a green waste stream to deal with the solid output of the wastewater treatment plant. So they mix that solid output with green waste and sell it as fertilizer, so. I mean, at worst case scenario is there's not enough green waste because it gets too expensive. And that means that the solid waste, or sorry, the, the, uh, the sewer, sewer rate will go up because they have to figure out what to do with that solid output. So in some ways, it feels like we're a little bit over a barrel, or I feel that way. That's the introduction. Um, I welcome discussion from you. And if you want to think about it for a bit, we can go on to some of these other, maybe, uh, fee, proposed fee changes that aren't quite so complicated, um, and come back to this one. I'll leave it to you. Aaron, please.
Yeah, so in thinking about this last couple of days, um, am I right? In remembering that Nibley City puts out a couple of large dumpsters in the springtime for people to bring trash to. It's kind of a community favor.
Thank you for asking that, yes. Um, so we used to have large dumpsters full-time out on Twelfth West where people would, uh, be allowed throughout the summer to take their green waste to those. And then we paid Logan to haul those to their green waste facility. Logan, I, I mean, that service is now gone, right? And we could do that service for, with Waste Management. Uh, it's a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar fee for them to come and pick up one of those roll-off dumpsters. And then there's the tipping fee at the green waste site. And if it gets contaminated, then the whole lot gets dumped into the landfill. And now Waste Management will charge us for the tipping fee into the landfill instead of the tipping.
Which, what is the tipping fee, like ballpark?
Uh, yeah. It'll, and.
So I, like, I don't know how many tons would be in a garbage truck. Yeah, like how, how much
In the bin.
Is this cost Waste Management to dump?
So that's a minimum of three hundred dollars, but the, the, the problem is it's hard unless we have staff with a backhoe compacting those bins. The two-hundred-and-seventy-five-dollar offset every time they pick it up, two-hundred-and-seventy-five, that's the thing that wipes us out because it's ninety percent air. So the tipping fee is not, is not what kills us. But it means we're just paying an exorbitant amount of money every time they would come and pick up one of those, one of those roll-offs.
So.
The only way that Waste Management suggests that that would work is if you have, if we staff it in real time with open hours where somebody's watching for contamination, I may have somebody with a backhoe compacting it. That's their experience to make that work.
Right.
Now, the second, I think, actually, the question you asked is what about special spring and fall days? Where.
Ask, do we have, have, do we still do garbage pickup once or twice a year as a special favor to our community?
Yes, and Justin, do you have details on that for us?
Yeah, it's, uh, is Steve there? Does Steve know the date right offhand?
Well, every Saturday, the twentieth, from May the one, we'll be doing it at the green waste site. We'll have two green waste bins and two garbage bins that will be.
So we should get that out on social media. Okay.
You're gonna do both things. Before you just said garbage, right? So you're, you're adding green waste this year as a channel.
The green waste just go around as well.
Okay, okay.
And Waste Management is alerted that if we fill up those, they'll, and we'll compact them and they'll come and take those away and bring them back. Yep, hopefully.
So what we, uh, way, basically, we don't have Waste Management on standby to dump them.
Right.
We just set up the bins and fill, which typically have not filled. Uh, if they do fill, we'll close the gates. Green waste, we can dump on the concrete, roll off at a later time than the dump trucks. But garbage, we'll have to shut that down for sure.
Okay.
But for green waste, do we have a backhoe mashing it down so we can get more space during that day on Saturdays?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And there's no charge for that. That's, that's, we're, we're not charging citizens to come to that. That's paid out of the city funds, but it's, it's not, we're not charging individuals that come to the site.
Me is, for now, green waste is good until July, July is when they'll start charging for the damage.
Uh, Logan City. I think that's when the proposal would likely be adopted by Logan City, right?
The challenge we had with our green waste, when we did have it, was during the weeks, it was relatively clean. But the weekends, that's when your log would completely get contaminated. We'd come in and there'd be, they got used as a dump site, you know? Birthday parties, that's where they'd take it, so. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's just bad.
We were serving, I mean, we didn't, again, we weren't there monitoring it. Other cities have done this and monitored it, uh, especially on certain days like we will now. But if we're not there monitoring it, we're providing that service to people outside of Nibley. Maybe that's a good thing, maybe it's not, but there's a bunch of commercial operators that it was cheap, it was quicker for them to go to the Nibley dump site than it was to the Logan Green Waste Site. So again, maybe that's a good thing.
You mean like commercial landscape operators or?
Yes, ma'am. Yep, right, so they can fill them up pretty fast.
Yeah.
Does that?
That does answer my question, yes. I, I mean, I just am wondering if offering this once a year or maybe even twice a year in the fall as well is like enough to help ease the burden on our, on our citizens of the rate increase? Or if it's just not convenient timing, people just want it when they have the green waste that week all year long? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very impressed with how many green waste residential customers there are in Nibley City. It's under a thousand, but not a whole lot under a thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty or something. That's pretty good. And by the way, there are about a hundred, maybe a little bit more, that have the second can. So, I mean, that could shift when people say, well, I'm just gonna cut my expenses and increase my college and not worry about putting green waste into a green waste stream. We've had, um, people even sign up. More people sign up for green waste this year.
Uh, and this, this fee increase or that we've adopted with the Waste Consortium is, how long is the agreement, remind me?
The green waste agreement will last for this season.
Just one year.
And at that point, Waste Management will see if it's working for them or not. And if it's not, the price will go up. And this becomes a bit of a self-fulfilling prophecy because the ten dollars and fifty cents is based on the density of residential carts in an area. And if people say, well, it's just not worth doing it, uh, the, the, the price for the rest of the people will go up.
And just to clarify, Waste Management will be evaluating all of the communities collectively to see if it works for them.
Yeah, the, the optional part of green waste is as a community to either participate or don't participate. So it is an optional add-on to the contract. It is an optional add-on to the contract. But the agreement. The bylaws of waste management say everyone that receives the same service. Receives the same cost.
Um, have we as a city considered the financial viability of opening our own green waste dump? In some Nibley-owned property and staffing one person to sit there during some number of hours each week?
And do what, and then haul it off to Logan or what would you do with it?
Sell it to the Logan sewage system?
Well, it has to be processed.
Yeah.
It has to be mulched and.
Yeah.
Right.
Round up.
Yeah.
We'd have to buy that.
We'd have to, we'd have to invest in that equipment. I mean, is that like, is that even in the realm of financial feasibility, do you think, or is that like laughable?
No, it's a lot of equipment.
Yeah.
A lot of dirt and stuff.
Or do you contract?
Seen what they do, have you seen the facility they have?
Yeah.
And they, they got acres and acres.
Yeah. We, I, I just bring it up because we have lot acres and acres of open land around our city.
If it gets to forty or fifty dollars.
That's what I mean. At what point does it become financially uh an option that works? For uh a, a money-making operation that surrounding cities will then come to Nibley to bring their green waste at a cheaper price than going through waste management?
I think the secret to. Affordable services or is, is like, like that or sewer or anything else is economy of scale.
Yeah.
So. We would have to go big.
I mean, we already have a cast waste, cash waste consortium, if I understand, and that's fifteen or thirteen communities working together. What's the viability of those fifteen or thirteen communities coming together to invest in green waste equipment?
Yeah, I can weigh in on that. Um, the outlying communities aren't interested in green waste.
Yeah, they just burn it in their own.
There's a, there's a division.
Yes.
Uh, by densification. And so, you know, they, they, they deal with green waste either on their own property or, you know. Feed it to the goats or burn it or whatever they do.
Mm-hmm.
But. Um, part of the, part of the problem of the Logan fee. Versus the waste management fee again is density.
Mm-hmm.
Truck miles.
So maybe we're not there yet.
I don't think so. Justin or Steve, do you wanna? Talk about weigh in on that proposal to buy our own equipment and?
You know, it's something we could certainly look into. We haven't uh as of yet. But we, I mean, we could definitely poke at it.
So when I talked to waste management a couple of weeks ago. I think you go back, what you, a lot of the other communities aren't really concerned about it because he made the comment that he wishes. Other communities would do the same thing as Nibley was doing, doing the spring cleanup, so. I guess it'd be, uh, it'd be. It'd be million, it'd be a million dollars at least to get going.
Yeah.
Just, just for the guy to along to do that, so.
Yeah, we would. There's a little bit of a legal battle there, um. Again, because it's one for all and all for one, waste management owns a monopoly on collecting waste, including green waste. In the consortium district. That doesn't mean it couldn't be negotiated.
But yeah, this idea maybe wouldn't be collecting green waste, but just a location to people, for people to bring green waste, right?
I see.
Alright, well, it seems like we're in a hard spot, but this is, that's not the right solution, so. Scratch that off.
For thinking of it. Other ideas, Nathan?
The other thought was just, uh, is Nibley City and are we in our budget willing to subsidize it, right? You said this traditionally, we've just passed the cost on, but maybe we need to look at subsidizing it a little bit to bring it back to where we expect it to be. I wouldn't hesitate to think about it.
Um, I think there's an inequity between the second trash can and the green waste can.
Yeah.
Um, full disclosure, waste management brought the. First proposal, and that's why it took a little longer to get it ironed out. They actually proposed. Renegotiating the existing contract for trash collection. To raise the cost of the second can. To subsidize the green waste collection. And again, the communities that were not interested in. Having green waste thought that was a pretty bad deal because they got an increased price on the second can. To subsidize something they're not, they're not, uh, they haven't elected to, to use. Now, I'm not planting the seed, but you all can decide to charge Nibley citizens. Uh, the appropriate fee as, as you see fit. Again, it becomes a bit of a philosoph- philosophical question of how do we encourage people to do what we think is the right thing versus. Um, do we charge people? The cost for a service. The true cost of the service.
Or that's what we've done at all the, the waste managers. This is the cost, that's what.
It's straight through pass-through cost.
And, and even the administration, we're not charging extra for our staff to process it, just the.
Currently, we are not, and I think we ought to look into that with. Uh. When, when we look at the budget and Wendy's and Amy are helping us.
Yeah.
Figure out those costs of administrative costs.
Yeah.
So we are subsidizing trash collection and green waste through the non-charged for administrative costs.
Right. Like I said, it's for a year. That worked out, we could, we look at it next year.
It, it will be renegotiated next year, I guarantee it, because this is a, this is for a year.
So Nathan, the difference between the second can and green waste is two twenty-five, and you said there's what, eight, about eight hundred users in Nibley?
There's about a difference. Do you want the difference? There's about eight, there's about eight hundred and fifty green waste users and about a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five second can users. So you can see.
So nineteen, nineteen.
Subsidy was, is heavily. Right, to make up for eight hundred and fifty green waste users with a hundred and twenty-five single can users, that's pretty big subsidy on the. Extra sick can.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's one thing I learned out of the economics class I dropped out of, it's that incentives matter.
Yeah, just thinking if we subsidized all of our green waste users two twenty-five a month. Which is the difference between that and the second can, we're nineteen hundred dollars a month. Right? So twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-three thousand dollars.
Well, they probably, do you?
For the year.
Those that have green cans, do you even fill the whole can up every time?
Yeah, I don't know. I used to use the empty field next to me and now there's a house. I don't know what I'm gonna do.
Oh, I don't know if you want that on the record.
We're good friends.
Cause they can, your neighbors can pull up. If you only use half, they use half, then you just.
You could pull with your neighbors. That's a good idea.
I, I have.
What, more goats be on people's property?
I have spoken to people that. Fill their green, green waste cans every week.
Wow.
And they definitely are not satisfied with every other week service. Which to me.
I thought you said it was coming every week.
It is, but currently, it was, it, it is, but. In the transition last year, waste management started with every other week.
Yeah.
On green waste and that didn't fly.
Yeah.
That was a bad deal.
Okay.
People say, we need green waste collection every week, and that's what it is, but that's not where it started last year. So we talked waste management into. Essentially them subsidizing. It at five dollars a month and picking it up every week. For the last half of the summer.
Yeah, I mean, even subsidizing the difference between the five dollars. That we used to have. Is still below sixty thousand a year. And then you can say, if you have a second can.
But, but then, but then we would have to just keep increasing it.
Correct.
Every year, which people are not happy with an increase regardless of what it is. So.
Let's think about more.
Think about some more, move on to the next one. Good, I'm off the hot seat.
Thanks.
Um, I'm sorry, I know you had your hand up. Um, this is actually a time when. The, the time is reserved for council discussion. If the council would, would like to. Let me, I'm, I'm gonna put it on you guys. That's what our rules are. Would you like to speak to this? Would the council like?
Yeah.
Okay, so please come forward. Again, we're not in a public hearing, we're definitely a public meeting, but.
It's spending rules.
Well, it, it doesn't suspend anything. It's just, this is what it requires to let you speak at this point, so you have permission. How's that?
I just had a question about the green waste.
Can, can you tell us who you are, please?
Yes, I'm Christina Dunn.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we just had a question about uh why they're charging for service on months that we don't receive the service.
They just spread it out through the whole year, so you, they, they, they certainly could. Um, not charged for the month that you don't receive the service, but they just increase the cost when they do do it. And that's the way Logan has done it too. So that's a bit of a, well, we'll just do it. They'll just do it the same way Logan has done it. That's a great question. It's just the way it is. And, and it would, it would come out to the same number at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's uh sit on that for a minute. Community room, large and small gathering fee.
Justin, do you wanna take that one?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I couldn't, I apologize. You said the large and small gathering fee, right?
Community room gathering fee, yeah.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Um, so the staff, we looked at the way we've been charging that over the years. And between the resident and the non-resident, and we had a small gathering and a large gathering, so. We uh just discussed it. We really haven't been able to charge anybody the large fee because we have no way of really coming to verify it. So we thought it would just be better to reduce that and have one fee, instead of a large and a small, just have the, basically a resident and a non-resident fee.
Okay, any, any, does that make sense to you all? Any questions? Okay. Okay, to move to the next one, okay? This is the date change fee on the community room. Justin, is that you again?
Yeah, but I'm struggling to hear a little bit.
Okay, let me get. Well, somebody else can, anyway. So this is the community room date change fee?
Yeah, o- okay, sorry. So what's happening is we've had a few residents who are reserving a fee. Or excuse me, reserving a date and then they continue to move the date instead of use it. And what that's causing is dates to be tied up and not available for other people, and then they change and move it. When they're too close to the date for other people to be able to kind of hop in line and, and reserve it for the night, and so we thought we would just charge a small fee. To discourage that and to try to leave as most uh open as possible, as most nights open as possible.
Questions from the council? Okay.
I have a, I have a question on this.
Sorry, sorry, okay.
Uh, the. The people that you've noticed are changing dates. Um, are these just typically residents wanting to use it or are they organizations or?
I believe they've just been residents.
Thank you.
Is, are just changes happening like day of?
Like. Go ahead, come, come up to the mic if you would, Amy, and. Counsel, I'm guilty of this too, since Justin maybe isn't hearing well because I'm not close enough to the mic if you speak into the mics, thanks.
So it's typically just been residents that are utilizing the building and we've, we've actually had somebody who's moved it. Four different times, um, but we, we have just a few people that keep moving their date and. And so we just wanted to charge something to discourage it, but it has been just residents and, and not organizations.
It's, it's, do we have, I don't remember, do we have a policy that like if they cancel within twenty-four hours, we charge them anyway, or is there anything like that?
Um, our policy is that they cannot cancel, or, or at least they cannot receive a refund if they cancel within two weeks of.
Okay, that's what it was.
If it's, if it's greater than two weeks' notice for canceling the event, then we charge them a twenty-five percent. Um, cancellation fee and refund the difference.
Thank you.
And, and this isn't happening within any of Nibley City's groups. We're, we're not having any problems like with. Anything that the Nibley City is supporting itself, that, okay.
Justin, uh, next is a sewer modeling fee residential.
Yeah, if Tom's there, he could speak to these probably cleaner than I can.
Tom. Tom Dickinson, city engineer.
Yes, thank you. So uh, the sewer modeling fee, there's a couple ways to approach updating our sewer model. Some communities update that on a, every five-year basis and they pay a consultant to analyze. Um, the system and update um ERUs and the capacity of the sewer. I'm proposing that development pay that cost when they come in to develop, so these fees here are. Relatively what our consultant charges us to update the uh models, both sewer for uh residential. And I'm just gonna run through the next three items, sewer modeling fee for non-residential. And then the water modeling fee we, we've been charging already, and those, those fees uh remain the same, but we're establishing a new non-residential. Um, water modeling fee, so. These are just a uh, an effort to have development pay for the cost of doing this, this model rather than the city to pay for it. When we update our master plans.
And, and so this is a new charge? In the past, we have not been charging?
We, we have a sewer modeling fee that was enacted last year for the resi- it was just a sewer model fee. We are now separating. Residential and non-residential on both the water and the sewer.
Okay, thanks.
And Tom, can I ask? Just to clarify the difference between non-residential and residential as far as developers, cause. The developers own the land here, right? If they're developing.
Question, neither paid when a development comes in for a subdivision, like a residential subdivision. Or a commercial development, let's say we get an industrial use that it's a really heavy water user. You need to model both the water system and the source and capacity for them.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies.
Okay. Levi, are you up for subdivision violation?
Yeah, so uh, most, most of the fees I'm talking about um came because the, the. Uh, the last time the fee schedule was changed, we uh. We, instead of having just a standard fee for a lot of different violations, particularly nuisance violations. Uh, we itemized those and, and, and um, and the council adopted changes which. Uh, you know, was different depending on the violation. Well, we missed some things when we did that. We, we, we didn't itemize everything. And so that's, this is this fixing that, putting, putting things in that were, were left out of, of. Basically that list of all, all the different um violations and two of those are the su- subdivision. And land use violation, so this, this is just if, if um someone were to violate. Uh, regulations within, within our land use ordinance or our subdivision ordinance. Um, I believe it's set at five hundred dollars. It's not, not in here, I can pull it up in there. Uh, the land use appeal application, that was um kind of inadvertently taken out the last time uh. That the fee schedule was changed, so this is put back in. This, this is a fee that would be charged uh anytime an applicant. Uh, would like to appeal a, a decision, a land use decision, and that's uh seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's what it was set before as well. Uh, these next two on penalty for blocking or diverting water, pen- penalty for restroom or sewer facility. Violation, tho- those are two within the uh nuisance code, tho- tho- uh we didn't include in the. In that change over as well, so. Just adding those to the chart, so there's, there's a fee that the city could charge if these, if these violations occur.
Okay. What are we up to? Recreation, Chad, are you gonna talk about recreation fee changes? Thanks, Amy, yeah. I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I'm happy that you're up here telling us about this.
No worries. All right, so this fee is, is just a change in verbiage. Before we had down that, um, this fee applied to four pairs of goals, to changing the, the placement of those. And now we are just changing the range to be from one to four pairs of goals. So it's just kind of a change in verbiage, um, just to allow for anywhere between one and four is being changed for that price, but the price hasn't changed, just the, the verbiage.
There's a fee per player change as well.
Yeah, the last one.
Oh, and then this, this last fee, um, staff proposes eliminating a per-player fee for outside organizations using our athletic fields and courts, um, we're just eliminating that. You want me to, do you wanna say why?
Yeah, so, um, part of the reason for that is outside organizations that utilize our fields can be thirteen. That's the direction we decided to go. It, it seems to be more fair, it's a lot easier to assess and.
Okay. So. There are the proposed changes, you've seen the, the redlined, um, fee schedule. Um, it'd be, a- as you know, it'd be appropriate to, uh, having received this information to adopt this for first reading and then come back and debate policy at second reading, or?
So, um, so if we didn't pass it this time, will that affect our green waste collection? Or are we still okay, are we on a time for green wastes?
Right now, we are passing the $10.50 per charge from waste management to the green waste users in our city. So that will remain the same.
Or the same.
Right? Right? But I would appreciate the council at some point backing up what we're doing, which was really just because we just ran out of time to do anything else, right? So I'd like to not leave it like that, I'd like to have the council take responsibility for this, how's that?
You're in the, they're not gonna hassle you.
Okay, Nathan?
Yeah, I'll just make a motion to approve for first reading.
Okay. Motion to approve as presented for first reading, is there a second on that? Second from Kay? Debate on that motion, please.
Anything you want them to work on, or just more time to think about it, or?
Uh, I think we need to work on the, the consideration of, or get some numbers of maybe what it would look like if we subsidized that green waste. Whether that's increasing on the, I think the increasing on the second trash is not a bad idea as well. I think those, just getting some numbers with those two things would be helpful for me to make a decision.
Yeah, um, so we could work up, for example, a spreadsheet that would let us do what-if games even in real time. You know, what if, what if we subsidize green waste per can with this much per can? Right, that's pretty linear response. We, as, I think you as a council, and I'm happy to be involved too, might wanna think about whether you want that to come out even in the end, that we're collecting the same amount of money from our residents because we're paying the same amount to waste management. So when you aggregate everything together, or if you want to subsidize it with the general fund, that's an option too. If you wanna charge administrative fees, that's an option too. So, um, again, I think that same formula would, would let us answer that question as well. Is this a net gain or a net loss to the general fund with how those subsidies might shift around? And I just, to be clear, there's lots of other scenarios we could run, but you're specifically, Nathan, I think, interested in a subsidy of the second trash can to cover more, uh, to, to play the game between the second trash can and green waste charges.
Yeah, and to try to get that, um, green waste fee closer to what we are already used to, would, which was the five to eight dollar range, is the five dollar range, but. So that's, that's where I was thinking we could go. If we just kinda, if we can try to get it there, whether that's using trash or just like you said.
You mean like a short-term solution?
I mean for our next budget.
Like if Logan City starts charging $10 per green waste dump and starts charging a 20, what did you say, 22% increase in green tipping fees? Fees are gonna go up regardless after a year, right? So $5 is a very temporary fix, but just to ease people into it.
Yeah, I, I mean, just quick numbers, I think, to raise the, we'll, we'll do what you asked. Um, I think it'll come out to about an increase on the second can of about $35 a month.
Yep.
To go from where we are now, eight twenty-five, with, uh, second can to make up for the $5 per green waste service. I mean, that's just proportionality, so that's a delta of $35 a month for the second can. I, I didn't weigh in on it, I just did the math. And I may be wrong, and so, uh, Justin, I, I understand, I think, what Nathan's asking for. Hopefully you understand too, we'll put our, we'll put our heads together on that. I think we can play with it in real time.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I do, can I ask a quick question on, I may be misunderstood, I may be misunderstood, Aaron, before. Aaron, are you talking about like a full-on green waste facility? Or are you just tending, having people dump it and having us haul it to the green waste facility?
No, I meant like a full-on waste facility, like what, is that just laughable idea? Am I totally up in the night? Or is that like a consideration, like in 20 years, when we are paying $27 per ca- I don't know, for a green waste can per month or something? Is it gonna make more sense for our Nibbly City residents and maybe our surrounding communities to just have our own green waste facility?
Okay, that's a little bigger than I had originally thought in my head, but I don't, I don't know that it's laughable just because I haven't looked at the numbers, but we, we could certainly at least poke at it a little bit and, and come back with some better idea.
Okay.
Can I throw out one more thing, just to maybe ask?
Yeah.
For staff to look into is, I know Miller's does wood chips and stuff like that products as well? And I, I don't know if.
You mean you can buy them from Miller?
Yeah, like they have them, they collect them from somewhere, right? And they're processed somewhere, and I think it's all done. Is essentially just maybe look for some private opportunities that may be close as well.
Great idea, yeah.
For the hauling and shipping and processing.
Yeah, so.
Maybe we handle the hauling, they, they process.
Again, we need to think about the exclusivity with waste management. But I think, wait, I, I'm guessing, and I should never guess at what people are thinking, I'm not so sure that waste management really wants to do this. Based on the fee, it doesn't look like they really want to do this. And the threat is if, and by the way, if the densification goes down, it's gonna go up, and we might not even offer this next year. So they're struggling to figure out how to not lose money on it. That doesn't mean that they have the only business model that would work. But, and, and I remember reading in the Herald Journal that ironically, the EPA funded Logan City with a three or four million dollar grant to upgrade their green waste facility in the last 12 months. So, so again, Aaron, we're talking about scale, I don't know what scale we're talking about, but certainly it can get expensive.
Then there's probably no talk on the county to step up and help on any of this?
That's the most laughable thing.
I don't have anything to say.
Talk about laughable proposals.
Well, we're just part of the county.
That's way too much hope.
It was a struggle to get the county involved in way, in the consortium at all.
Yeah.
And they were a key player. I kept saying, well, if they don't wanna play, they don't have to play. They are a key player because the Casey Snyder Amendment that made the county involved to negotiate tipping fees into the landfill that Logan owns in the county, yet, uh, 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 but, yeah. I personally, uh, I'll pontificate a bit. There are some things that I think are best done at a county-wide scale. I think owning a landfill and hauling trash are, uh, two of those things. But so far, the county hasn't, remember my story about going to a Logan Library lecture, Historical Society lecture, I put in a status report, right? And I said, I don't wanna go to that, you know, that's Logan Library. Well, it turns out the county sort of divested itself of being in the library business and the trash business at the same time in the mid 1970s. So that attitude seems to prevail. There is an election coming up.
Probably no way a mayor could be part of the county, um, council, is there? Like a nibbly mayor?
I didn't, and, and there's, the, the, the nibbly mayor is not that dumb. I know that Catherine Buse, when she was elected to the county council, there was some timing issues about when she resigned from the nibbly council to be on the county council. So you can't do both.
Right.
So even you can't do both, and you're smarter than that too.
Well, I know I can.
Any, any more discussion on the motion for adoption or first reading? Staff, we're clear on work to do? I'm looking at Levi, but really it's on Justin and me. I mean, it's on Justin. And Amy.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, if there's no objection to voting, we shall vote, uh, by voice. Those in favor of adoption, first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Or in favor, none opposed? Thank you, council, thanks for that discussion. Okay, next, uh, let's move into. Let's move into, Garrett's here. Garrett, welcome, uh. So Garrett, in order, we're, we'd love to see you participate remotely, thanks for joining in, and so.
I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna interrupt because I got on.
Garrett, we're not hearing, we're hearing you, but we can't understand you.
You know?
You understand us?
Yes.
That's better, can you count to 10, please?
One, two, three, four, five.
All right. Now that may seem silly, but in order for you, this is in the, this is in the rules, in order for you to be a voting member of the council in a remote setting, uh, you have to be able to hear our conversation and participate in the conversation. You understand that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for joining us, um, we're just moving into the public hearing on resolution 2405. So this is, uh, wait a minute, where did I jump?
Now we're on line nine.
Sorry, line nine, this is a public hearing for 2405, accepting an update for the Nibbly City wastewater management plan. And I think Mr. Pratt's gonna talk to us about this. Thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely. So this is the plan that was adopted, cleared back when we started sewer system in 2003. We just need to keep up on it, and so we did make a few changes, we'll just quickly go over those. Everything's stayed the same, the biggest thing that we changed was, of course, the murder personnel, uh, who's in charge and updated a few names, updated some home numbers, what have you. And then we've gone through, updated a couple items, one of them being the how, how fast or how many years we go between cleaning sewer, and we got that at four years. We'll have the entire city cleaned, so that's been an update. We still have on here as of now, eight years for the CCTV. But in, in our division, we've got, got a six-year goal, but if it, if we can meet it, we're gonna change it on this maybe next year or years to come, so. That is the biggest changes that we've got on there this time.
Okay.
And so realistically, we can move on to the next one here, I guess.
Um, we should, y- you mean the next agenda item?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is gonna be the first. For you guys, right? So you can look at it and have your.
Yeah, the council may decide to do, uh, first reading, waive the second or not. But before we give it to the council, we actually need to have a public hearing and give the public a chance to weigh in on it. So you gave us an introduction to give people a chance to now speak to us about that. And if you'll hang around, maybe there's questions the public has.
Yeah.
Okay, are there questions of Jared before we move to the public hearing? Okay.
What is, what is those abbreviation, you said CCT, what does that stand for?
That's gonna be the camera system that goes.
Oh, okay, thanks.
That's a nice resource.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so Jared, you can have a seat and we'll open the public hearing if there's no objection from the council. Uh, the item before the public to speak to us is, uh, accepting an update on Nibbly City wastewater management plan, which details were in the information packet, besides what Jared told us. So public hearing's open. Craig, come on, man, you gotta come through, come on, man.
I didn't see anything here in here about, uh, handling green waste.
In the sewage system?
Yeah, just run it through a chipper and wash it down into the sewer, no. Okay, uh, with that saying, no public comment, without objection from the council, we will close the public hearing. Okay, public hearing's closed. And now we'll turn it over to the council for discussion. Uh, agenda item 10 on accepting an update to the wastewater management plan. You could do first reading, second reading, up to you. Thank you, Amy. Nathan?
I'll make a motion to approve for first reading.
Okay, we have a motion on first reading approval. Is there a second? Second from Norm, discussion on the motion, please.
I'll just explain why first rather than waving, um. One is I, I, it was hard for me to track what the changes were. I had to go back and it, it didn't look redlined to me, so I didn't know. So helping the presentation was helpful today, but I would just like more time to maybe get a redline. And then, um, it also gives us time, there's some, uh, as you are used to, just some, uh, grammar and mechanical things that I wanna review to send as a whole.
Excellent. Are there items you're asking staff to do between first and second? It's fine if you are, it's fine if you're not.
I guess I'm asking for a redline of what was it and what changes did we make rather than just a new one? I don't know if that's even possible anymore.
Can we do that, staff?
Okay, that'd just be helpful.
Okay. Good idea, anything else to work on before second reading? Okay. Is there an objection to voting on first reading? Seeing none, we'll proceed with a voice vote, please. Those in favor of approval, resolution 2405 for first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Garrett, are you voting? Can you, can you, are you keeping up with the conversation to a point where you can vote?
I hope so, I said aye, I don't know if you can hear me, though.
I hear you now, so five in favor, none opposed, thank you, Garrett. Let's move to item 11, which is resolution 2409, accepting the 2023 municipal wastewater planning program survey. Jared?
Thank you.
All right, so this municipal wastewater planning program survey is pretty much, we come here every year, the state required us to do this and then let you folks know exactly what, how we're doing. is pretty much, we come here every year, the state required us to do this and then let you folks know exactly what, how we're doing. So this year, there's only been a few things to roll over the change. To note, we've had zero problems with any flooding in any basements. We've had zero class one or class two SSOs. So that's what our third part, the one that we're looking for. And we have added these haven't changed, but we do have just noting the policy that we do all training is paid by the city and they do that. And that all of our options are tied to the level that the city is required by the state. And we also I've already submitted this, it allows me to submit it and just have a date that it's brought to you folks. So today's the date that we have on that. The the only thing that we're gonna, I'm gonna add to this survey real quick is the sewer kind of is outside out of mine. And so everything that I do, I have schematics of what it takes, how much it takes time wise. And so, for instance, I'm going to start by saying our calculations, sixteen days is a month and four days are a week for us. And then ten hour days. So what I'm proceeding, just keep that in mind. So we have two hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and fifty five feet that we need to maintain. So we need to clean that and CCTV that. And with that, our total hours come out to two thousand, five hundred and fifty two hours to do that work. That's two hundred and fifty five days, a little over. And then fifteen point nine five months is what it takes. So what we do is we break it down. And so the goal is that we clean fifty three thousand, eight hundred and sixty three feet a year. And that we TV thirty five thousand, nine hundred and nine feet a year. But we also have eight hundred and sixty manholes. And we have that change. And that is actually a good thing we're going to redline that because that's another change that I must have skipped the page on. We had that every other year in the master plan and we've changed it every year. Our insurance company wants us to have it every year. It's going to be proactive and it's proven to save, save us problems doing it every year. So with that, even cutting this down to a manageable as we can get it, it's going to take six hundred and thirty two hours just to manage this plan. He's like toilets flushing, sixty three days, ten hour days and four months. So four months out of the year needs to be dedicated to dealing with just the sewer.
And can you do that year round or or?
Yes, we can do it year round, but once it gets into the negatives, the cleaning truck is
Don't like it. Yeah.
As far as camera at work, we can do that year round as long as the roads are safe to be sitting out in the middle. So that's a big
Were those numbers based upon your current staff?
Yeah.
Resources?
Actually based off of average, that is
Okay.
And the average of, that we averaged out. Any more questions?
Are you, Jared, are you, are you foreshadowing that we're understaffed?
Most definitely.
I'm sorry to be so blunt. Okay.
By how much? If you were to make a recommendation?
Well, if you wanted me to actually sit down and go through my whole schematic, you'd chase me off the car and feather me. So but with my schematics that I just read to the new goals we have, I'm very optimistic we meet those with at least one additional member of the team as soon as.
And you, a full time member, I'm assuming that's what you're saying.
We do, we do use the seasonals and we have used seasonal since I came on staff. But there's, in this industry, there's certain things we can't allow them to do for safety reasons, plus certifications. You gotta be licensed to do some of this, but mainly safety concerns. We utilize them.
Hey Jared, could you get in front of a mic for me, please? Sorry.
So we utilize the seasonals, both water and wastewater. So that's kind of the, how we do that. But there's so many things in the sewer system that we just aren't going to be able to put the younger individual and just safety reasons. So, yeah.
I have a question. Reading through this survey, there was one question, I didn't understand what this was. It says, has a repair and replacement sinking fund been established for the sewer system? And I didn't remember that term from the budget. So can you explain to me what a repair and replace sinking fund is?
So in a retrofit, that's the one that's asking if we have a fund that can replace the whole system as, as it is deteriorating. So they're only built out to be so many years. And do we already have a fund that's already built up to start replacing as our infrastructure sinks and fails? And you probably see on there the answer.
Well, it says no. Yeah.
Now, our system is in good condition, don't, don't get alarmed. But as these can, fifty years is kind of the life. We're in it twenty years and we know that we can get much more than twenty years out of this type of product. Hundred years plus, but the maintenance is crucial to be able to continue that and bring that to that longer, maybe hundred years or wherever we want to go with that. With the infrastructure being as expensive as it is, and of course, the equipment is specialized and very expensive. And so is replacing the whole system. So it is crucial to keep it maintained. And plus, we want to keep those zeros on the SSOs. We want to keep those, nobody having a backup flooding type of thing. So.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Jared. So this is before the council, accepting this planning program survey.
I motion to approve resolution twenty four oh nine.
Okay, that's a motion to approve twenty four oh nine, and that's the survey. Is there a second from Kay? Thank you. Discussion?
Just got to say thank you for
Yeah.
doing the survey, for gathering the information and presenting it to us in a way that helps us understand so that we can provide the support necessary for our city to have what they need and to have it function well and appreciate your care and and your efforts to to do such a good job.
This a yearly survey?
Yeah, it could. I mean, it it seems like, you know, this is a short term, long term kind of thing. And the short term gains and costs add up to long term gains and avoiding those big ugly bills when things go south. So thanks for staying on top of it.
And they don't give awards for having good sewers, do they?
Yeah, we need, we need the Utah or maybe you could find someone that could give you an award, we'd be happy to give you one.
Yeah.
It's going to be the team that needs to play the war.
Very kind of you. Thank you, Jared. Yep. Okay, is there an objection to voting? Seeing none, we're, this is for adoption on resolution twenty four oh nine. So Taylor, guess what? You get to call the roll. Would you do that for us just by? Huh? Yeah, please do. Just go down the line, ask each council member what their vote is.
In favor. In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Garrett, are you in favor?
I'm in favor, but I couldn't, I'm in favor, but I couldn't hear my name.
All right, we don't have a, yeah, thanks. Okay, I'm counting at five in favor of adoption, none opposed. Thank you, Jared. Good job. Thanks for the discussion, council. Uh, let's move right along then to the parking regulations. And Levi, why don't you talk about the proposed changes? We'll take more public comment and we'll listen to you for a little bit before that.
Yeah, so this is the first year that our city staff has enforced parking and in particular, winter, winter parking is where we started. Recently, the city code was changed, you know, on on a number of items where misdemeanors were changed to infractions and 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 state code is is also adjusted on this. And so our city staff actually did enforce some parking regulations. The the sheriff department, we 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 can still contact them and we we do occasionally when there's parking issues. But our first crack is is for city staff to handle it. And as we went through this process, we just learned a few things with our current ordinance. And really, the purpose of these changes are, uh, you know, for the winter parking is to be more in line with when our snowplow drivers would need, need the vehicles off the road to be able to safely plow the streets. And and Steve consulted with with the public work staff, the snowplow drivers on on this, this recommendation to extend it from twelve AM to, uh, twelve AM to six AM and go from twelve AM or twelve AM to eight AM. And we can get in more detail on on why, but you know, in in general, um, the eight AM is is to allow for more time, you know, during the prime time of when when they're plowing snow. Maybe once I get through this, Steve, if you want to add some more, more detail to that. Uh, but these other items in here, that there's, there is some language in the current code that lists some exceptions for thirty minutes for deliveries, doctors, on house calls, vehicles using repair utility. These, these, these exceptions, they do become a little bit difficult to enforce. And so it's staff's recommendation to to remove these from the code. You know, if if there was an issue, we could work kind of on a case by case basis. But we we found, you know, for, for example, in this, this issue with granting an exception for deliveries that are thirty minutes or less. Well, that basically doubles the the time it takes to enforce it because you'd have to go, you have to go out and check. And then thirty minutes later, you have to go out and check again to verify that that a vehicle, you know, was there for for longer than thirty minutes. So it's, uh, and and then I guess you're assuming that it's a delivery and not, not for another purpose. So just to simplify it, staff recommends to remove these and just have it a straight. Um, you know, no parking on on street during these hours. Uh, there, there's one other change that staff's recommending, recommending in a, in a separate section on, and that's parking act. There's, there's a section on parking at curb regulations, just, just to clarify that this includes not parking on the sidewalk. And as as well as in park strip areas. Uh, we have been able to enforce the code under, under this, you know, that says that on street parking is is at curb. But it ju- just, just to clarify that, we wanted to include something in there on on parking the sidewalk and and park strip, which is those are probably the most common issues when it, when it comes to, you know, parking correctly at the curb is that they're actually on a sidewalk or in a park strip area. So yeah, Steve, I don't know if you wanted to add anything on the on the timeframe that this, this largely came from a recommendation from from public works. I mean, like, we, we talked about changing it in general because it seemed twelve to six just didn't, didn't seem right, but yeah.
So we had quite extensive talks on this of even moving the time, you know, to a later time in the morning, four in the morning or something like that, because we usually start around three. We start calling out and we get going. But the reason we went back to twelve is because nibly city residents are used to twelve. And that's, we felt that if we extend that to two AM, we're going to encounter more cars on the road because people are going to fall asleep. I, that's just really the kind of the way we put it. So we just, that's why we extended it from six to eight, leave it at noon or noon, midnight. Uh, midnight, we're used to it, we just extend it for two hours in the morning. Very challenging when you, you are fighting cars out there when you're pushing snow. And so this was our way of hopefully even get the same as it is.
Okay. And and we can, we can get into that, that's a bit of a policy discussion. I think we can let the council take that up, you know, when the time comes and you'd be invited to be a part of that discussion, Steve. Uh, other, other questions or information we should offer to the public before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, so does this apply only during like October to March, when the overnight parking regulations are, or is this on all year?
Yeah, it's November, November to April.
April, thank you.
I I believe it's November first, April first.
Yeah.
November first of each year and April first of the following year. Okay. Uh, let's, uh, let's open the public hearing then. If you would like to address the city council on this issue and these proposed changes for the first time or the second time, we we welcome you. Um, I'm gonna, you, you all, I'm, I'm going to bring in Tom Bernhardt's suggestions, right? I'm going to include that in the public hearing. I didn't actually ask Tom whether he cared if I did that or not, but he's, he's used to standing up in front of people and helping us figure things out. So for the public hearing, Tom Ber- Tom Bernhardt asked us about uh, only enforcing the overnight parking on the majority of the days that don't have snow in the forecast. So that's something the council might want to consider and talk about. And then, um, again, it was about if, if we're changing the times uh, that the, uh, for, for no parking is to accommodate plowing when school is in session, that's an if. Then what if we only had a prohibition on on street parking uh, when school was on, say, Monday through Friday? So again, that's, that's a suggestion from a member of the public and we can talk about that policy when it's back to the council. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna put that in the record for the public hearing on behalf of Tom Bernhardt. Anyone else to talk about anything else you want in the public hearing? If there's no objection from council, then we'll close the public hearing. Seeing none, uh, we'll close that. And turn it to the council to consider these changes and also consider other things that have been brought up in the discussion. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty four dash oh five. No, sorry, yeah, twenty four dash oh five, that's one. For first reading.
For first reading, okay. So again, this is our goal for first reading, to answer questions, make sure we understand, see if there's additional research on staff's part before we come back to second reading. Is there a second on that motion? Second from Norm. Okay, thanks. Let's talk about it.
Man, I just, for plowing snow and having to go around cars, I think more you can have it free, the better it is. That way, if car gets hit or something, you don't have to worry about liability or anything else. So I, I can see. So I, I can see that is just get them off the roads. That's why, so for Monday through Friday, I, I, I mean, you plow snow Saturday and Sunday, too. So I would, I would just keep it even more on school days.
Yeah.
So I like that proposal. Okay. So if, um, if you had like one o'clock, would that make a difference between twelve and one? So if we bumped it to, or like, you you suggesting if some people are overnight a little bit? Because you don't start up as, as what you sound and tell me. Because you don't start up as, as well you sound and tell me between two and three. So maybe that'd be something to consider.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we got Steve on the run. Is two o'clock as good as one? I know you're gonna draw the line somewhere, but I'm just gonna find it.
Get an auction here.
Yeah, I, you know, we, I've, I'm over the bottom of that.
Yeah.
I don't know if I want to push you on that.
Yeah.
Because one, if you have New Years, you know, people are up, they probably won't leave until one or two. That'd be a holiday. I'll be in bed too. I've seen enough coming.
Thank you, Steve, for standing to the mic.
This year, I got the going out with this, so. Be honest with you, I'm not out there one, I'm not out there two.
Yeah.
I come in a day before a storm's gonna hit, so we can get the cars out of our way. That's, that's when I came in. So if a storm projected, I come in the day before.
To write tickets. At 4 AM.
Been in as early as three, the time I get here and get going, the first one's probably about 3:30.
And again, your goal is to have the streets without parking so that we can plow snow. Not plow around it and then write a ticket.
That's my goal was to get them out, get them out of the way tomorrow. I'm not coming out on them. Meat bread, I don't know.
Yeah. How many tickets would you guess you write?
I think the first night I did, about 35 tickets.
Oh, quite a bit then.
Yeah.
And then went down from there.
And, and behavior changed based on that?
That was just the uh, next storm came in, I went this way from the road tracks this way and I only got about maybe 10 or 12 on this side. So this side's really good.
That's what I live thinks.
Except if a storm already came.
I think it was just getting the word out there.
Yeah.
Steve, do you have married any of those people that are repeat offenders that are a consistent issue?
Usually once they got, they got out.
And this is pretty standard for all cities here in the valley too, isn't it? That they, yeah, it's not like we're doing something different.
Where I former worked for Logan, we started at midnight.
Plowing. Right. Number of miles divided by a number of trucks and drivers. Nathan?
So I, I think uh, a direction for staff, if you could, would be we've had probably the last couple of years, some of our biggest snow years. Um, is there a way for you to go back and look at like common dates and times where we were calling guys in or what is that? That'd be interesting to see. I, I don't know if it'd be predictive at all, but.
Be much easier than last year.
Okay.
I've spent on our storms, but last year we could definitely do because see how many comments we had in our meetings, but yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, as mayor was pushing you to, can you do it by three? Can you, I think that'll give us dividing resources by streets. It, it'll give you some kind of limit that we know we need a little bit. I don't know. I just think it'd be interesting to see and that would help maybe guide some of these choices, but. So yeah, I think that might be something I'd direct staff to do if they could get something for us. It's not too, too terrible to do.
You understand that, Steve?
What busiest times for snowstorms, date times?
Are, are you looking for like a day of the year that it snows most often? Day of the week that it snows most often?
I think mostly what we're caring about here is the time of day.
What time they start.
What time they start.
Perfect. Thank you.
In order to get the job done.
Now I understand. Right. And if you check with staff specifically about what if we went two to eight? What does that look like?
On our worst storms.
Yeah, I mean, and there's gonna be some storms that wipe us out no matter what we do and we'll finish one plowing session and start the next one back to back and.
About.
No, that's just a couple guys here for the late shift, just to keep priorities.
Yeah.
Other than that, it's been, you know, typically 3:30, 3:00 to 3:30.
Do you typically have to stagger guys doing it so that we can get through those kind of storms?
See them suck up like that and we'll stagger them, but we've been built for this.
Haven't had to.
Storms have been in our advantage. They come in and they quit and
Awesome.
Four after the storm puts three in the afternoon, we usually will just push into the night, you know, eight o'clock at night and just get it done really back in.
Steve, do you feel that uh you have enough forecast data in front of you um to make decisions about when to send plow drivers out? Okay, uh, and, and, and I'm, I'm not gonna, did, I'm not gonna say that's bad. I'm just asking, is that good enough?
I, I've tried to get on or talk to UDOT that allows us to see their stuff as well, you know, because they're, they're pretty precise on their storms and but they won't let us, you know, they're, we're restricted to use that information.
It's not available from UDOT. We paid for it.
KSL.
Other bug.
Turn on our uh, our uh wise camera down there and look out the car and see what's going on.
That might need to be another project we put Casey Snyder on. I mean, like you said, we pay for it. It's useful information.
Yeah, right. Should be public information. Gee, I bet that's on some Campbell communi- Campbell Scientific. I wonder if someone could hack that. And by the way, the company that employs me for our Canadian subsidiary actually tried to sell snow forecasting services as a business model to people like Cash Valley. So they would install a weather station that claimed to do a better job than what was currently available. Uh, frankly, I think they were selling smoke. So um I didn't pitch it to Nibley, somebody else did, and I think it was the right decision to not buy that. I mean, I, I think there's a ton of weather data available and you know, there may be, take advantage of UDOT or the National Weather Service or something to collate that data. So it ends up on KSL because that, that's where KSL gets it, is National Weather Service. And um, as much as I believe environmental measurements are gonna save the world, I'm glad that business model failed because it wasn't required. But I wanted to give you a chance to tell me that we need to buy more weather stations.
I'm not saying we need to buy more. You only have a camera here of UDOT. I think you can look at it 160.
We actually have a really nice weather station there at Ridgeline, by the way. What? Yeah, it does. If there was a time it was off, Campbell Scientific lost the feed. It should be up now. Yeah, about two, two, yeah, two or three months ago.
For your best.
So, so Steve, when you were talking, you said something that I had never understood before that I think is actually really important if we can get this information out to our residents. You mentioned how not the day of the storm, but the day before the storm, that's when you'll go out and ticket people so that they're off the road in time for the storm. Because I've had residents ask me, why am I getting ticketed? There's nothing forecasted right now. And I bring it up because it might be a good thing to put in our notation, our mayor's newsletter, whatever it is, our newsletter, like in October, when we're talking about weather and preparing for the winter, that I think if residents understood that that's going to happen, it might be another level of maybe you not having to go out all the time. They might say, oh, I need to move it or I know I will get a ticket because a storm is forecasted within the next 36 hours or something. Or whatever it is, 48 hours. Because I couldn't explain that to a few residents that asked me why they were getting a ticket and there was no storm forecasted that night.
I do think though that difficulty is sometimes storms hit when they're not forecasted. And I think the reason the ordinance is written the way it is, just so that they're off the street during that time, no matter what, so.
Yeah, it's a lot of balance just because, you know, when we lost KSL, we see Salt Lake, right? And the storms really are a lot different out there on Salt Lake here, but well, you know, we still watch the Bay of Dawn and play its film, but skill challenge. Right, so sometimes it is different. Sometimes we'll miss them. We didn't win this one this year. But we don't know when UDOT missed it too, so I just have to pass the third one.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Well, that's not my question. It's more discussion of things, I guess. Um so the changes proposed aren't exclusive to winter parking tonight, even though that's what we public noticed sort of. For instance, the clarification on parking between the park strip and area. One thing I like about the blanket winter enforcement is it gives us at least four months out of the year or some of the other problems that develop over the nice weather months. You know, trailers and boats and cars for sale and broken down things. So as I'm, as I've been reviewing this today, I think there's some other um, things we might consider or at least we consider that when we, we think about these winter hours too, because I, I do think it kind of clears up some of those problems every year as well. I don't know. You can speak to me more of that, Levi, is you know, people just leaving trailers or broken down cars or whatever there for, that are unlicensed and, which is already not allowed, but I think the winter cleanup essentially can solve some of those problems as well. Is that a fair statement or?
Um, it, it probably does. I, I guess I haven't collated that, but it, but yeah, I mean, I think if, if people develop habits to keep the car, their vehicles off the street in the winter, then they keep doing that through the summer months as well. Uh, but you know, I know that there's several that once winter's done, then you know, they move it out of their driveway and put it out on the street, so. Uh, but, but yeah. And we, we did notice, we did include in the notice the parking at curb regulations, just that.
Okay, yeah, that, um, I, I, I wanted to make sure, Nathan, and make sure that you're okay with the way the public hearing was advertised, so.
I am. Yep.
Okay, you satisfied with that?
Yep. Maybe I was just too focused on it.
Yeah, I mean, I know it was, we kind of.
Yeah. No, that's okay.
Add it, you know, because this is primarily focused on limited winter parking, but it is, is something as we've enforced parking, that was one other issue that we came across, that it wasn't entirely clear, the whole parking on the sidewalk or the park strip.
Okay, so I'll bring up uh one maybe suggestion for us to uh work or maybe all write and propose by a second reading is in the limited parking section of the ordinance. There's a bullet number three. Um, and it specifically just mentions that it's illegal to leave standing a motor vehicle for 48 hours. Um, and in our definitions, I wonder if we need to, like we have in these others, include things like trailers, et cetera.
I would probably just take out motor.
So I looked up um Providence and Logan's and in their ordinances, they specifically say trailers and motor vehicles. And I think that's kind of what you're getting to, Nathan, and, and their, and their parking ordinances, every time they're referencing a motor vehicle, if they want it to apply to trailers as well, they used that term. Not just vehicles or motor vehicles, but specific trailers. Am I thinking that's what you're getting to?
Probably more clear than just saying vehicle. The way we've defined vehicle includes trailers, but, but that's probably more like without having to refer to a definition, that's probably more clear.
Yes, that's my suggestion for a proposal for a second reading.
Yep. And second reading is an appropriate time to offer amendments, but if you wanted to bring back the proposed wording that would keep us from writing from the bench.
There was something else I noticed in the uh, winter parking section um, with the other cities that I previously referenced, they had in their ordinances a legal exclusion that any damage caused by a city plow to a parked vehicle on the street when they're not supposed to be parked there that the city was not accountable for that. I, I don't remember the specific legal language, but if that is the case, I probably thought it's not a bad thing to consider putting in our own ordinance because if someone is parked on the street when they shouldn't be and you're trying to plow and, and obviously you're gonna do your best to not have an incident, right? I mean, but you know, it's, it's yeah, right. But anyway, I thought that was an interesting thing that maybe I, I think it's a good idea to consider. There's a place to put that in our ordinance. If it's a legal thing.
I'm gonna suggest we run that through our attorney.
Yeah.
We can, we could put it in the ordinance, but let's make sure it's defensible.
It was very obvious. If you look at their ordinances, the language was slightly different in that particular paragraph than the rest of the ordinance. So I'm going to assume that a lawyer did take a look at it at one point in time, whether or not it's still enforced. It's just pretty obvious the language is different.
Let's, let's have our attorney look at it if, if she would.
Yes, I looked it up today. I, I thought I saw it in Logan as well. But I specif- I remember Providence very clearly. I read it out loud. It was such a weird phrasing. I thought this feels like a, a very uh lawyer infused statement.
Norm?
Do we have anywhere that says that you can't dump dirt or gravel? You know, like they dump loads off to put in their yard. Is that anywhere?
Yeah, so that um, that's actually covered in our nuisance code.
Okay.
Blocking public streets. There's, we have enforced that when, when people have done that. But we, we just do it through the nuisance ordinance, not the parking ordinance.
Craig, if, if you would help me out, um, I appreciate your comment about primarily. But I, I, I searched for that in the documents and I'm not sure where it is. The notice for the public hearing. Is that right?
I, it's probably not in the ordinance.
Okay, okay. Or the, the ordinance or the resolution to adopt the ordinance. Okay, good point. And I, I mean, you, you're exactly right on. I, I, I hope you don't mind me engaging you at this moment. We don't want to make money off this. We want to change behavior. Do you want to? Yeah, go ahead. I, I invited you.
I, I think there's a big difference between what happens now with the city enforcing versus the sheriff's office. Uh, and I think that's where it comes into play. If, if you're doing it four in the morning or whatever, I mean, I have no problem with that at all. I mean, I think that's fine. I, I wouldn't even go as far as saying if we knew a big storm was coming in, I don't know how, what your rules are on using that callback system to call the residents or something. If you even said something out there, hey, please get your, I mean, I think most people want their streets cleaned. I mean, that's the, the big deal. And so I think, you know, if you're doing tickets like that, when I got my ticket was the sheriff's office and they hadn't been sitting in there at midnight watching my car, waiting the half hour and then they gave you the ticket. And I, that's just wrong. So the only reason that would happen if that was being done to, to show that they're doing it, there's quotas or something, the city was. pounding and saying, are you doing this or not? It sounds like we have a better system in place now. And back in, back seven years ago, we, I don't think plow ever went out before like six in the morning, we didn't have enough plow drivers to do that. So I do notice that they're out now and they're doing a great job. So I have nothing bad to say about that and I know we need cars off. I just think you know, the timing was, was the only issue that I had on that. And then just that word, because that came up when I had a meeting with the previous mayor that why are we on this, a day, you know, we didn't have snow for two weeks when that happened. It was over a holiday. I couldn't appeal because the judge was on vacation. I mean, it was just real dumb, I thought. It was a way to punish citizens for something they should be punished for. But there are some people I watched, we had a neighbor on our street last, not this year, somebody must have talked to him. The year before they had their car out for over twelve months on the road consistently. And then this year it was moved before the winter parking, so that was nice, but two years ago, they, you had plow around every day. So I know that those were the, the issues. So that's my biggest concern. I think it sounds like it's being taken care of unless the sheriff comes by twelve thirty. That's, I have a problem with that. I mean, that's just ridiculous, but.
Yeah, good, good points. Um, no, thank you, Craig. I, uh, I'm very happy to see Nibley City move to an administrative enforcement on some of these things instead of law enforcement. We don't need a guy with a gun to solve every problem, so.
Well, I mean, like I said, it would be perfect if you could, that, that happens, that's great, because you don't want to be out there entertaining while they're trying to plow at the same time, that's, that's not healthy.
Yep. Thank you. Nathan?
Just a question, is that, you said that when you did those thirty five, did we do like a hey, winter's coming for, like a warning system before? So that would be maybe another su- just suggestion we think about is when that April, sorry, when that October first day, November first day rolls around, we go out and just, hey, I know we did communication, but like we find cars and stuff that are sitting there and give them a warning rather than the ticket when that comes enforceable? I don't, that might even make your.
Considered a warning.
It's an extra day of work, but. Okay.
The, the fee is twenty five dollars. Warning, then you have to track it, you have to track that vehicle in that location. It, there's a lot that came with doing the warning. Now, I do think there's more we can do to generally warn people. And I think, I think we do already, like in our newsletter, we, we, we get the word out that, hey, it's winter parking restrictions are coming. We could do something during storms to get them out of the way, but I think I don't know, we, we just, at least when we went to do it this year, we, we felt like doing a warning. We, and we, we warned for almost everything else, the thing, so we, that was, that was kind of my first approach was, okay, yeah, let's, let's do a warning. And when we looked into it, it's it's almost just not worth the squeeze, you know?
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Is there an objection to voting on adoption of this for a first reading? Seeing none, let's proceed with the vote. Garrett, give everyone else a chance and then I'll listen for you. I'm going to ask for a voice vote here. Those in favor of approving first reading on ordinance twenty four oh five, please say aye. And Garrett? Thank you. I count that as five in favor and none opposed, so we have a little more work to do. Thanks very much for being accommodating staff. Appreciate your extra efforts on this and we'll, we'll see you at our next meeting again. Okay, thanks. And Craig, thanks for your help on this. Okay, uh, Tom, time for you to shine. Yes, of course. Uh, wait, let me ask counsel, anyone opposed to taking a short recess? Seeing none, we'll take a break. All right, if everyone's ready, we'll come back into session. Garrett, are you with us again, please, or still?
Yes.
Perfect, thanks. All right, let's pick up where we left off and talk about a contract for design services on a water and, uh, well and tank.
We're making really good progress in this meeting too, so I will keep it really quick, okay? Um, just a little background, we are looking to enter into contract with Sunrise Engineering for designing a well and tank. Uh, the reason for that is both I told, that we have master plans that we're trying to keep up with. And more recently, we were found deficient in our storage and our source of water by the state division of drinking water. So this is another tool that we're using to try to catch up on that. We're not deficient enough that we're incited or, or in violation, but the deficiency is there. So that, with that and the master plan, uh, we decided to go out with this contract as a request for proposals. So we went out in January twenty twenty four of this year. And I sent this out to several cohorts that I've worked with, uh, very reputable firms. We got eight responses, so eight proposals, which is incredible for a small community. The fees ranged between a quarter million dollars and over a half a million dollars to provide the services. Um, and it was really, to measure it with the size of the firm and, and their expertise and what they do, but we assembled a, um, a review committee. It consisted of staff members, elected officials. Um, and I will make my public disclosure now. I had a conflict of interest because I worked for Sunrise Engineering, so I, I excluded myself from participating in any voting or any ranking. Justin was also an advisory committee member. He, not quite a conflict of interest, but he had a friend that actually proposed on it, so the two of us kind of stepped aside and just were technical references to the, the committee and that went through this review. There was a strategy I used in, in reviewing and everybody had to read all nine thousand pages, it's not quite nine thousand pages, but all eight proposals. And, and everyone did a great job. They scored based on certain criteria, the approach methodology and the scope of work that each firm proposed. The project experience of each proposing firm, the team experience and the depth of the team and the value to the city. So that was the initial scoring that we used. Based on that scoring, um, four of the proposing firms. One was Sunrise Engineering, they had the highest score. Jones and DeMille was the next one. J U B and Hanson Allen loose were three and four. I think, uh, Hanson Allen loose was a little higher than J U B at the time. Um, we discussed scope, we compared, but you know, we were trying to figure out, is this a complete scope? How are these, uh, firms going to perform? I expressed my experience with each of them. I've worked with every one of them except one firm on that list in, in previous projects in my career. And, uh, once we, we all established that, yeah, that's our, that's our ranking, then we opened our sealed fee. So all this, all the fee was excluded in these proposals. It was a separate sealed envelope, so we opened that and, um, surprisingly, the highest ranking two maintained the top rank. So it was almost, so here, here's the, uh, there, Sunrise Engineering was still the lowest fee, it's at two hundred thirty six thousand dollars. But that's very rare in my, my experience. Usually you rank all these firms really high and then their, their fee is like the highest. But this, uh, it worked out very well. Cash Landmark was next, but they didn't score as well without the fee and then, uh, Jones and DeMille was right in the middle there. And then J U B and, uh, Hanson Allen and loose, they kind of swapped positions, three to four, four to three. So based on that information, we, we decided to take a closer look at scope and, uh, just determine what, why there was such a vast difference of a quarter million dollars in some of these fees. And we couldn't see a whole lot of difference in all reality, so. Um, the, it was unanimous of the committee to offer a, a contract with Sunrise Engineering. I will point out one thing though, if you go back to the, the list of the fees, Sunrise Engineering had an initial fee of two hundred thirty six thousand one hundred dollars. There was an optional fee included of about fifty thousand dollars. And it's, uh, it's a component that they said we should plan on, but it wasn't in their, their initial fee and it's, it's a booster pump station. What that, what that is, is if you have a tank on the valid floor, you need to increase the pressure to get that water into the system. So they excluded it from their initial, but they put it as an optional. Jones and DeMille did the same thing, the second ranking firm, so this contract takes their Sunrise Engineering, Sunrise Engineering's two hundred thirty six thousand dollars and adds the optional, um, pump station or booster station into that for a total sum of two hundred eighty six thousand eight hundred sixty three dollars. Now, we've already had a kickoff meeting. They're really eager to get started on citing where this well or tank is going to be and they're trying to pursue some financial funding for us. Partial grants or low interest loans to try to get these under construction. So we don't have it budgeted for, uh, construction, but we do have this in our budget for this year for, uh, the design of the, uh, tank and development of a well. Any questions?
I have to say I was a little bit miffed that I had to rank them without knowing the costs. Because my bride and I have a deal that every time we propose something to the other, the other gets to ask, I don't know, how much is it going to cost? But it worked out fine. I think you dodged a bullet. How's that?
Uh, that's fair, but I, but at the same time, why?
I always am interested in the cost of something.
And it was, it, it seems to taint the, the true analysis of who is, is the best firm. So in this case, the best firm by unanimous, well, almost unanimous, would be Sunrise Engineering. But through the story, they ranked high, so.
Miffed was the softest word I could think of and that's probably still too hard, so, I mean, I did it.
Not miffed you, but because I think it gives us the opportunity to look at the best ranking firm, otherwise people will open the B and say, oh, this guy's the most expensive. And they won't even rank them. And you'll notice the, the next, the highest fees were J U B and Hanson Allen loose. And they scored very high, but it didn't out, they didn't outscore, um, Sunrise or Jones and DeMille.
Yeah, I, I think one of the challenges is to decide what the proportionality is, should be based on cost versus based on performance. I mean, that's a hard, that's a number. And I didn't even know what that number was, but that's okay, because I didn't know what the fee was. But I think it's, it's, you know, what we want for the city is the best value. We want the best performance given the cost.
Thanks for that. And on that same note, I, I, we did rank the fee or the score of the fee based on proportionality to the lowest. So it was, it was a percentage of how the lowest to that, that next number, if that makes sense, so. In, in other words, there's, there's a couple of ways to do it. You can interpolate and give the the top ranking score of the highest and the lowest fee or the highest fee, the lowest number or zero. And if it's like one, if it's ten to zero, you would give the lowest fee a ten and the highest fee is zero. But that didn't seem very good, so we did it, uh, at percentage.
Yeah, so just a question, and again, it's no big deal, just so I know, um, like what if the best performer didn't have the lowest fee, then what, so excuse me, what percentage of the total score is based on fee and what percentage of the total score is based on performance? Yeah, so is it fifty fifty? You average the performance and average the, the, the fee? I, I think it was more based on performance than fee.
We'll see that.
The bottom ones?
We'll see that approach methodology and scope of work was fifty points, project experience was zero thirty. The team was zero to thirty and overall value was zero to five. No, it doesn't say. I, I think it was a, uh,
Yeah, so, so in actual, and it's fine, I mean, we, we've got the right company on board. Sunrise got eight hundred and fifty eight points based on performance. When we added in the fee and they were the best. When we added in the fee, and they were the best fee, they increased by about ten percent. They increased their overall score by about ten percent. So, a, and I like this, it, the, the the fee was only ten percent of the total score.
That would ensure that we did have the best firm. And then the value is determined.
And, 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 well, and I'm not giving you a bad time, I'm not arguing. It, it, I will admit that it was hard for me to really understand, this is designing a tank in a well, right? I'm the wrong kind of engineer to know what is a good proposal. And, I mean, a, a great proposal and a terrible proposal. So, it, it was, it was hard to do some of that. I'm, I'm not complaining, it's just that, to take, to take a bunch of laypeople, right? With you being excluded, right? And I, I hope we can rely on your professional expertise. Am I being mean? Okay.
I have some questions.
Go ahead.
So, if I understood the scope of the, the request, like Mayor said, this is just for water, tank, storage and design, correct? So.
And a well.
And also the design of a well, the location and design of a well. Okay. Maybe you don't know this off the top of your head, I'm just having trouble figuring out where in the budget is this two hundred eighty six thousand dollars and eight hundred and sixty three dollars coming from in our budget?
Justin, is it coming out of the water impact? I think there was three hundred thousand from the water impact.
Sorry, I can't hear Tom very well, but I can answer that question if he's not answering it.
Yeah, what's, what's the answer, Justin?
It's mostly out of impact fees. And if, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I think most of it's out of the impact fee and maybe a little bit out of the water department.
Okay, yeah, that, that answers my question, because I'm looking at the water expenditures accounting sheet, but I just was not seeing a budget area that large for this.
Yeah, I flipped over to the water impact fees.
Okay. Alright, that makes sense. This is kind of getting, I guess, like a little bit out of topic, but I'm wondering, I mean, that, and I guess I also just have no idea how much construction things cost, but that's like gasp number, that's massive. So, do we anticipate like ha- ha- a ballpark figure of how much the actual tank and wellhouse will cost? And do we have those budgeted for next year?
Water is about a million, no, a dollar a gallon, so a tank would be in the range of two million, two million gallon water tank would be two million dollars-ish. A well, my most recent estimates with a well and equipping that wellhouse is around three point two million dollars. There's no way we'll have the funds to do either one of those. We might be able to get the tank if we save up a whole bunch more impact fees. But, we're gonna have to either bond or get a low interest loan or something. And in the meantime, it might be advisable to visit our rate, our water rate schedule. We are very low with regard to a percentage of our mean adjusted gross income of the area. So, what, what that means is, if, if we're not, if we don't meet certain thresholds on our water fee based on the, the Magi is what it's called, mean adjusted gross income of the area. We, we will have to pay a higher interest rate to get loans for these, this infrastructure. So we might want to revisit that and, and that, that's a later discussion. We're, we're a year, years out on constructing any of these, either one. But I, I, I would caution the council to be thinking about that moving forward.
Charging a higher rate for water to our residents, you mean?
Yeah, i- if, if, if we move forward with, with construction and we need to get funding sources for it, yes. We, we should be looking at our rate structure.
Uh, you mentioned that Sunrise Engineering was going to look for some grants to help cover this cost, this fee cost, is that correct?
The construction.
Oh, moving forward, construction costs. So, they're, they're, are they going out and applying for grants for us, or they're just saying, hey, you should look at this grant?
Yeah, in their scope, they, they are applying for a grant that is due May thirty first. Um, it, it'll cover the cost, some cost for engineering and a test well.
And a test well, okay.
I thi- I think it could cover, I, I think it was four hundred thousand dollars up to.
Yeah.
So they're, they're pursuing that now. And we're, we're still in the, the preliminary planning stages of wells and tanks right now. We don't know where the best location is for a well. We've put it up with our other ones and, and sacrificed resiliency of our system by having all of our infrastructure in one location. Or we put it on the valley floor, clear on the other side of town, but then we're have to, having to, to build a booster pump to supply that into our system. So, we're still, we're anal- we haven't yet analyzed our, the hydraulics of our system to decide what is best.
All in the scope of their work?
Yeah, and so where I was going with that is, this grant application is due relatively quickly and there's a lot of effort that goes into it. I don't want to sacrifice the quality of our end product just to meet this grant schedule. You know, I'd rather postpone the grant or application for a year and do what's right for the city. And, and the, the consulting firms on board. But we're still moving forward, trying to meet that deadline, but we're not gonna force it.
Okay. That's all.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you got me looking at the budget now. I'm a, I'm, I don't, I don't know what line to look at to say, where's the two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars? And.
I, I thought it was in the water impact.
Yeah, so that would be the income side, but that's, that's okay. I'm, I'm good with that. Good enough. We'll pay the bill. All right, other questions for Tom? All right, maybe a motion, there's suggested wording in the recommendation from staff.
Move to award contract with Sunrise Engineering in the amount of two hundred and eighty six thousand eight hundred and sixty three for design services of a new water well and storage tank.
Okay, we have a motion to award that contract. Is there a second? Second from Kay. Discussion on the motion, please.
I'm surprised how much that is. I know it's a lot of money, but you think they'd have like a stamp, like this is what, this is what a tank is of the here. As much as we spend for design for the resticism, you'd think you'd be able to just plug and play, but anyways.
Yeah, you haven't seen construction.
Anyways, thanks. I'm grateful we had more than one bid, so that's awesome. Yeah.
Is there an objection to voting? Saying none, I'm just gonna ask for a voice vote on this. Those in favor of awarding this contract, please say aye.
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 All right, thank you. I count that as five in favor and unopposed. Tom, thanks a bunch, appreciate it. I didn't, I didn't think I was gonna give you a bad time tonight, but thanks for rolling with me, and I didn't mean to give you a bad time. Okay. All right, um, who's gonna talk about a contract to have Sierra Homes construct our half of a road? Tom? Perfect, thank you, sir.
Have a great opportunity to work with Visionary Homes or Heritage Land Holdings LLC to participate with their development of Firefly Estates Phase Two. They will build half of our, half of the city own portion of the road. They, they agreed to do that for sixty thousand dollars. And it was such a good deal, we, I feel we couldn't pass it up. So I had them draft up an agreement. It's been reviewed by the city attorney and it's in the hands of Heritage Land Holdings again to evaluate the recommended edits from our city attorney, but we're just refining language at this point. So, our staff is hoping the council will support us in entering into, into this agreement. Getting that road right in front of Firefly Park constructed to the full width. With, with the development of Firefly Estates. There's a whole bunch of reasons, economy scales, we're, we're saving on mobilization fees as they, they'll already have their equipment, they're building the, their portion of the road that they're bound to by the development agreement.
Questions for Tom? Aaron?
Yeah, I was a little confused looking at the map, so it was showing a drawn online on the map in the information packet where this road was. But clarify for me, does half road mean our half of the road? Or does it mean we're constructing a half road which needs to be finished later?
That's a great question. Sorry if it was unclear in.
And, and, and just how far north is this road going? Because is it going all the way up to our, our new Firefly Park parcel, or is it shorter?
Love to walk up there, but Justin and Garrett wouldn't be able to hear my dialogue. But, so, Firefly Estates is just west of the cursor that you're seeing on the screen. So, by LUDMA, which is Land Use Development Municipal Act, I believe that's the term. The city can only exact half of the right of way and have them build only half of that road because they only front one side. Now, if they, they own the other side and they were developing the other side, they would build the other half.
Right.
Being that the city owns that east half, we're bound to build that, it, it's our expense. So, rather than the city coming in, get a contractor, put out an RFP or request for bids to construct that, put together plans and everything, they've already got it all, so we just have, we just tie onto them. So, our half would go about where that line is on the south end, up to where it curves around the, the corner there. And that would be our responsibility. The remainder would be all Firefly Estates Phase Two.
Okay, so it's really our, our half of a full road?
We're gonna get a whole road and we're gonna pay for half of it.
Excellent, yeah. Um, we don't have to pay for the part that curves next to our new park portion?
That's not our park.
Their development.
That's not our park.
Oh, they didn't donate that to Nibley City?
They haven't yet.
We will exact the right of way and the road, so they'll, they'll dedicate the right of way.
No, I mean, the parcel.
For both sides, because both, they own both sides of that.
Yeah, the, the, the park was dedicated to the city with Phase One. Um, but that, that's, that was all part of the development. The road, the road is going to be dedicated separately and they'll, and they'll construct the whole road.
So, to be clear, is that Tenth West? Tenth West will be a full width road, all the way as it connects to twenty two sixty South and beyond. So that, in the end, we get a full road. They pay their portion, we're paying sixty thousand dollars for our portion.
For our half of the red line and they're building everything else.
Right, yes.
Um, okay, a different question. Do we, what, how long do they anticipate this taking to build?
Um, they've been pushing for final approval. We had a pre-construction meeting on Phase Two, probably two weeks ago. They're still outstanding on some of the final documents and fees, so we, we haven't recorded a plat or anything. But they seem to be pushing rather quickly, but they're also pushing harder on Heritage Parkway. Which is the development just south, on the south side of twenty six hundred South at about thirteen hundred West. So they want to get that one permitted and going and then kind of fall back. Or vice versa. It just seems like they keep getting in each other's way. I think their bandwidth is just a little bit too narrow for what they got going right now, so. I'm hoping to get that done this year, and I'm hoping they get their portion of Twelfth West connecting to Logan's Tenth West this year. Because we're gonna be wrapping up on Phases Three and Four of twenty six hundred South, and I don't mean to get into staff report now, but we'll be finishing that up this year and then next year, we're, we're applying this year for more grant funding to complete that road.
And I heard optimistic forecasts about Sierra finishing their portion of going north on Meadow, Meadow Lane. So that our twelve hundred West will actually connect to Logan's Tenth West. I had been worried about a delay in getting that last little section done. I'm, I heard good news about it. I won't say a schedule or anything, but it'd be a shame for us to ask the cog a number of years to connect Chiram to the cash Logan Airport and have that last little bit of Sierra Homes keep us from connecting those dots. Um, Tom, do you know, is the, is the westward push on twenty two sixty South and the northward push, the red line that we're talking about? Are those gonna, is, is that whole northward and westward thing gonna be built at the same time? And that's their plans? I don't expect you to know that, but have you heard?
Right, their, their schedule or.
Right.
Scope, but if it were me developing that, I would do all of my assball paving all at once on all of the city roads and including the city's half.
We'll be hopeful then. Yeah, nice. Sounds like we're getting a good deal. And it sounds like they're thinking they're getting a good deal, so that sounds like a win-win.
Do we anticipate any, uh, water mitigation there?
Is, is it groundwater?
No. The, oh. Wild. Life.
Oh.
Wetlands.
Wetlands, thank you.
You know, land that's wet?
Yeah. Yeah, wetlands.
Couldn't see any evidence of any wetlands based on aerial photography and, and our wetland layers. Not, not within that area.
Yeah, there is that stuff to the north, right?
Yep.
Good question.
Yep. Me picked the right place for the park?
Yeah, right, let's, let's extend a park. All right, council, uh, maybe a motion would be in order? Norm?
Move to approve an agreement with Heritage Land Holdings LLC to construct the city's half of one thousand West Road near Firefly Park for sixty thousand dollars.
Thanks for that motion. Is there a second from Aaron? Thank you very much. Any more discussion? Garrett, you need to chime in here. We need to hear from you, buddy.
Well, you were having a hard time hearing from me, so I've just been listening. But yeah, I know, I'm, I'm all, I'm off the road. I should have chimed in on the last one with Tom since I was part of that committee.
You could have defended him against me.
Well, I, and I will, because I have to admit, not putting the price in. That was my first time going through that process. I mean, if you want some late night reading to put you to sleep, go read a bunch of A proposals. Uh, because that was the first time I have done that, but I read all eight of them. What was fascinating is that everybody came to the same top four based on whatever criteria they used to rate them. Which was, I thought, interesting. And then we added in the cost, because obviously cost is important, and it didn't end up changing it. And because some of them were so close, we went line by line. I mean, we were there for a few hours in our meeting. Just going line by line, breaking it down, saying, okay, why are they different? Where's the cost changes? And then we also asked Tom to reach out to the people that did uh, work with some of these, uh, engineering firms to see if they had, how many change orders they ended up having to deal with, was there delays? Did they meet the timelines and, and stuff that they projected? And, and mo- almost all of those came back very positive, uh, for the ones that we chose. So, I, I feel like we, we picked the right one, so.
Okay. Anything else? All right, is there a, do I haven't, do I have any objection to voting on the motion before you? Saying none, I'll ask for a voice vote. Those in favor of, uh, Doing this agreement with uh with with uh Heritage uh uh on with Sierra Homes. Please say aye.
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 Okay, five in favor, none opposed. Thank you very much. Tom, good job. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um. Yeah, I think I'll wait to talk about that road a little bit more in a staff report. Let's move right along then to council and staff reports. Um, Norm, do you wanna start today?
I got, I got nothing.
Okay, good start. Nathan, what do you have?
I'm good.
Wow. Aaron, lay it on us.
I wanna know what happened to Ted's.
They tore it down.
But he still functions in his shed.
Oh, okay. Did he sell his land? Oh.
I don't think so.
Okay.
They sure made a big hole.
Yeah.
There's a lot of environmental remediation going on, so that's good.
Good. All right. Um, I was just happy to see that bathroom parks are open. Lots of. Moms with small kids are happy to see that the bathroom parks are open, uh so I already told Rod. Thank you for that, but thank you, Rod. Um. And. Yeah, I I hosted a mock city council meeting for some youth in my neighborhood the other day. And they had a great time and got some public comments from them in an unofficial capacity. And they were about green waste was one of them that they brought up, not prompted by me. And they thought the price was too high, so there you go.
And do they have a solution?
No, she had no solution, just a complaint. And uh this was from a youth, by the way, and also another youth telling me that um our the streetlights in Nibley are too bright and shine into bedrooms. So there you go, some public comments from youth in our city. They also voted not to change the youth. Uh minor curfew from 10:30 to 8:00 PM, so now we know, we should keep it at 10:00 PM.
The the proposal was to go to 10:30?
No, the the it's currently at 10:30 and the proposal was to change the youth curfew to 8:00 PM and they all wanted to keep it at 10:30.
Well, that's a surprise.
That was my proposal.
So this is really cool. What what uh what prompted this mock council meeting?
Uh, the youth said they wanted to have a learn about government.
The, not the youth council?
No, 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 this was youth in my neighborhood from my church group.
Okay, yeah, good deal. I think we ought to reach out to the youth council to do some of this stuff.
Uh, yeah, it actually went really well and all the youth were very happy with it afterwards. So if that's something youth council would want to get into, it was prompted by the Heritage Elementary Second Grade field trip that they do here, which was so fun. And the kids really get into it and they actually have great ideas. So if we wanna help foster this for more youth, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Uh, let's do it. And so let's work with Shauna.
Yeah.
And and and. I've talked about it with her, but I've never done anything about it, so. Good job.
Yep, that's all.
Cool. Very good. Um. So this might fall in the realms of complaint, but that's not the intent. The intent is to. How do, how do I move on? How do we move on from it? Had a really interesting experience with waste management this last week. Um, so we had all of our uh hands out and in our cul-de-sac. And they've asked us to put them all on one side or the other, and so we put them on the side that doesn't cause conflict with mail delivery. And that seemed to be working out okay. Anyway, I ran an errand. I was gone for about 30 minutes. I came back. And waste management had come through. Every single can. Uh trash can had been emptied except for one, it would happen to be mine. And and so I I called city offices. I said, it looks like they missed my can for some reason. I don't really know why. Um. They reached out to waste management. Waste management came and did pick it up by the end of the day, but they slapped a big sign on my can telling me. I need to have it out of the curb before 5:00 AM. And I I just thought it was really interesting. Somewhere along the line. At least the one driver felt like he had picked up everything on the street. But it wasn't just me there. I actually had some other neighbors who said, hey, did you notice that your can wasn't picked up? And everyone else's was cuz they had seen it out there, you know, and and so I I don't know quite what happened. I don't know how to make it easier or make it more clear. Um. Or you you know, anyway, I'm just saying there there was a little bit of a gap there. I I appreciate the garbage pickup. I'm not complaining. In fact, I was really pleased calling the city. And the city sent the message out to waste management and waste management came and and picked up on the day they're supposed to. But I didn't know if there's something more that can be done to make it a smoother process for everybody. Because somehow they, I I hope they don't think I was complaining. Gee, you're terrible. It was just like. Eh, somehow you missed it. I I don't know if they've got good mirrors, bad mirrors, no mirrors.
Sign on your can implied that they thought you put it out late, that's why it didn't get picked up.
Yes, that was my perspective. Yeah, they just missed it.
Right.
And I'm not certain how. I mean, there's, on our cul-de-sac, there are six cans when you have recycle and trash and they are just lined up. In a nice little row. It's a lot of cans. It's possible you missed something. But.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Well. Honestly, I laughed pretty hard about it. I thought it was kind of funny, but I also thought this could be a problem down the road. Or with some other resident, and they might not think it's as funny as I did. I just, I. I had a good laugh over it.
Yeah, I'm surprised. I mean, I might. I will check into this, um. I'm surprised 5:00 AM is what they're asking because.
That was the sticker.
I didn't think they were supposed to start collecting trash at 5:00 AM.
So the other other things I've received from them say seven.
Yeah.
Which is why I thought that sticker was interesting. Maybe it was just, that's the only sticker they had and so they slapped it on there for some reason, even though it wasn't necessarily the message they. Meant to deliver.
The other long-term thing we're trying to get done is it doesn't make any sense for Nibley City to be the conduit of customer complaints to. On their service. There, we we have no. Uh ability to rectify the situation. We don't know if it actually gets followed up. Uh, there's no feedback. We take the complaint and pass it on and it just goes, we don't know where it goes. It goes, well, Wendy knows where it goes, but again, there's no. We receive the complaint, but we, there's no way for us to find out if the complaint was resolved.
Well, now you know on this, this one.
Uh and yeah. But in the long run, what needs to happen and what is supposed to happen is that. Uh, the, for example, missed pickup. Goes directly to waste management. And it's done directly on their website. And in fact, that's a feature on their website. But it's not operational because they still don't have their cash valley routes programmed into the website, so. You punch in an address and it's like, it doesn't know the address, so then it asks for an account number. You, we don't have an account number. Nobody has an account number. They just like say, well, maybe it's commercial or something, but. Long-term goal and Wendy and I and Justin have talked about. We we should not be in the customer service loop if we're not providing the service. So. I'm not saying that. That taking us out of the loop will improve things, but I feel sorry for. Wendy when she puts her heart and soul into serving. Nibley residents and she has no ability to resolve problems. All she can do is pass them along and that's that's a bad way to run customer service. So we still have some stuff to figure out with waste management.
Is she keeping the log of what?
Yeah, yeah, she knows. She keeps. What she does is she actually puts it in some kind, I think it's it's a spreadsheet. And then she sends that spreadsheet to waste management, so we have a copy of the the complaints as well. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm glad they picked it up.
Well, I am too. It was nice to have it emptied out.
Um. There's still some things to work out.
And and Wendy did an excellent job, obviously, of delivering the message and someone received it and they responded to it.
With a sign?
But and they they responded to it by taking the trash. I was thrilled with that. I just thought the sign was kind of odd. Um, and and like I said, I'd, I'm guessing that was their message, the implication that I didn't put it out on time. Um, but it could have been. I I don't know what other implication it could be, but.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Kay.
Mm hmm.
Uh, let's see, I, yeah, let's talk about a little bit.
I can give her a turn first.
I'm sorry, Garrett. Your turn. I didn't forget you.
Okay, my my iPod just died. Let me see if I can. Or my AirPod just died. Cuz I'm in the car, but uh on the waste management, we had something similar to that. Our whole street got missed a few weeks ago. But my neighbor works for waste management, so I just called him and it hasn't happened since. So. We do have a contact.
Can you give us his name and phone number, please?
Yeah, it's Bear. His last name is Bear. He lives on the corner of 450 and.
All right, that's enough.
3575.
I was just kidding. Stop.
Okay, anyway. Uh, I, my one thing is I want to uh thank Justin. And uh this is my first go around with the budget. And he took time and I met with him and we went through the whole budget and he helped break it down. And I just wanna thank him for helping me better understand the budget. And what I'm looking for in making sure that um. You know, if we're being financially responsible. And I really appreciated that. We have such a great staff and and also Tom and working with him and the group. And uh and Rod and everybody, you know, on that committee for the the well and tank. We have a great staff in Nibley. We we have some of the best. I think out there that really care about our city as much as we do. And I just wanted to tell them thanks.
Well put.
Thanks, Garrett.
Yep.
That's all I got.
All right, great. I'm sorry I skipped you. Um. For punishment, let's let's go to you, Levi.
All right, yeah, our active transportation plan uh is in full swing now. We're we're in a public engagement and existing conditions analysis phase. Uh, there is a survey out of uh you can get to it from from our website. And um, so we encourage you all to take that and to urge your neighbors. We, I think you've already gotten more than 25 responses, so. We're getting, we're getting a lot of good feedback there. We did have a couple of um also. Had a column focus group discussions uh with with a few different groups, one with several school representatives. We had all. We spoke with all three principals and a couple from the school district and. Uh, a couple of um interested citizens focused on schools. We we. Uh, had a discussion with um the Cash County Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee members. Then we had had a discussion with a couple of citizens that uh focus on seniors um and their and their needs in the community, so. We're getting a lot of good feedback. Um, happy with the process that we're going through there. And then we're working on wrapping up the parks parks recreation um and open space master plan as well. Um, it's taking a little longer than um than we scheduled, but we're, you know. Just making sure that we're, we've got a product that's usable and also reflects all the feedback and all the. Um, analysis that have gone into it, so it should, uh we were hoping to get it back. Uh, for consideration this month, but it's it's gonna take a little bit longer than that, so it's hopefully next month should be ready. Uh, for a draft, or we'll we'll follow it through the steering committee first and parks and rec committee and um. And planning commission and then come back to the council. That's all I got.
Good job, thank you. Taylor, do you wanna say anything to us? We're happy to have you here. Thank you for for helping us tonight.
Thanks, Taylor.
Steve? Tom? Seems later than that.
I got an email late last night, which is really encouraging and it's regarding Ridgeline Park. Phase one. We've, it's been exhausting trying to reduce scope, take out this, take out that. In our last meeting uh with with the group, we decided, you know what, let's just draw a line. We're just gonna say everything north of here, we will try to construct, everything south of there, we'll try to construct. So um I I posed that to our grant guy and he's communicating with the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant people. And I've got a soft yes to move forward with DWA. And refine the scope to meet, to match our budget, so. I plan on having meetings next week with them and try to just. Develop uh the scope of work based on budget that we can maximize what we have available to us. Get them under contract and get it under construction, so yay, it's a small win.
Yeah, good news. And and so to be clear, the the grant is not being reduced even with a. Reduced scope.
That's correct.
Yeah.
The way that they like it done is get it under kind of contract. Get, refine the scope to match that and then we have it, we do a scope amendment to them. And they're seeing, I'm being told anyway, that they're seeing these scope amendments all over the nation. And they're they're expecting it, so it's it's great.
Wonder why?
We'll we'll continue to move forward on that one. Um, little bit on the 2900 South access on the Highway 165 versus the commercial access on 165. I've had a few conversations with Visionary and and uh we've had meetings with UDOT. I think we're gonna end up going back to the 2900 South alignment and forego doing the connection, the permanent connection that is on the commercial access on the 165. Because UDOT would force us into a long-term agreement that has trigger points. It'll tie us into some things that I'm really not comfortable with yet. But if we just focus on that 2900 South connection, we can get away with just that curb median. It's still in the hands of Visionary at this point, but that's kind of the way both parties are leaning at that point. Is there any comment on that in council?
Can you just remind me, is 2900 South the essentially the? The gravel farm road?
Yes, that's the one. So we've developed that out with 20 foot of asphalt and connect that to Highway 165 there.
With a with a dedicated right turn and only?
It'd be a right in, right out with the the curb median like at Costco?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Uh, I think. I would just throw out the the one option that we just don't keep talking about that maybe we should consider is. Those phases require that access and so it might just be that those phases don't get built. It's an option. And I just don't want us to forget that it's an option.
Yeah, and and we've worked through several options with regard to that's that access. So it, you're absolutely right, it is required. And I've been communicating with the fire department on what they'd accept and there is a way. It's acceptable to the fire marshal to come off of the, with the emergency access off the Highway 165. Through that crash gate at the the temporary commercial access and access through there. To get to the whole northern area. They are comfortable with that. Having the 2900 South access enhances that ability for them to do that, but. Um, safety wise, I don't think there's an issue with with either of those.
Right, but I mean, the point well taken, the the they approved our beauty requires 2900 South. And we had discussed, well, maybe maybe we amend that agreement. But if we don't amend it and they decide to move forward with 2900 South, that agreement's still in place. So they they will be required to do that at this point in time before they move forward.
That makes sense. I'm saying that the homes don't get built.
Understood. Yep.
Kind of in that court, you know, but.
Yeah.
They they've gotta do it.
Um, last one is. We found some funding. For a design of uh another city half road. On 1300 West, so. Hoping to get, reach out to three consulting firms to help with the design on that. Uh, we, if you recall. We did a uh just a. A minimal wetland delineation to try to. To try to figure out if the Army Corps of Engineers would accept an AJD, which is what that is, is an approved jurisdictional determination. Which which they basically evaluate that area and see if that. Which which they basically evaluate that area and see if that wetland that's on our maps is communicates with the water of the state. If it doesn't, and they grant the A J D, we there's no restriction on on any impact to that. We can construct and go to town. If if the A J D fails, then we have to do a delineation and possibly a mitigation of any wetlands there. So um, this design, I'm still working through the final scope and stuff, but um. We'll we'll figure that out and hopefully get someone on board soon and we'll bring a contract to the council once we get there. I have nothing else unless.
I I I'm sorry, am I um why on thirteen hundred west? What's going on? Am I behind this route?
So this is by Zollinger Acres. There's a half a road.
Oh, yeah.
Again, it's city's portion of it.
Gotcha, I remember. I I didn't know how far north and south we were, okay.
Anyone been out to twelve hundred west? It looks like a construction site now.
It's all it's all torn up.
I had I had diverted my bike path the other day, so.
Still be able to drive. Or excuse me, ride.
Ride to there.
We did reopen twenty six hundred south this morning. Um, and so we have east west travel again. Um, it'll. It'll close again in the near future, but we'll keep you posted, so. Let me know if you want to want to opt out of my road closure notices.
Oh, man.
I like it.
Actually, that all right, Tom, I'm gonna ask the question now. Um. If it says road closed, I assume that means for bicycles as well.
On the road, right?
Yeah, okay.
There's a nice little path side though.
You can get around it, right?
It's really a community. Um, event out there.
From thirty two hundred south was closed, it was a lot easier for me to get here on my bike.
Yeah.
Car, if I could take the sidewalk.
I've communicated with several property owners, residents in the area and and uh they they have questions, but no one's really been. Obstinate or anything. Um, I I bring out plans. I show them what's going on. I show them what it's gonna look like and how it'd be constructed and everything and. They've they've all been great. I really appreciate the citizens here. Um, if I could change gears one, just before I leave here, I wanna thank city council. I wanna thank staff. Um. Hmm, excuse me. My family went through something a little while ago. You guys are really supportive, so thank you for that.
Thanks for what you do for us, Tom. Jared, do you have anything for us? Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thanks. Uh. And Clara, you're okay. Um, I so just briefly, uh, Justin, me and our star deputy. Justin, what's Atwood, Deputy Atwood? Uh, you all. Sorry, correct.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, you all had a we talked about this in our council meeting about addressing safety concerns on Firefly Circle. So we all got together with that resident today. Um. Aaron, let us know how it goes, how it went on Sunday. Okay, I think. I think we're we're all not sure if we. Made progress or lost ground, but maybe Sunday will tell. We we did our best.
I'll keep you updated. If I get prayed for again, I'll let you know.
And in regards to, I mean, I actually think getting that road completed will. Help. It won't necessarily help the nature park, but it will. Uh, it will it will help the residents of Firefly Circle realize that that's not their own. Little road. It's a public right of way that goes somewhere else besides to Firefly Circle. So. Um, that's good. We have a. We have successful Kestrel Box, it appears, in Firefly Park, so that's pretty exciting. Um. And that's all I have to talk about. Okay, I'm gonna say one more thing. Uh. Part of me doing this job was. To help me. Find my way to retirement. And on Monday, that will happen.
Congratulations.
So thank you. I'm going to continue consulting. I look forward to that and actually branching out into some other, I hope, some other consulting opportunities. I hope my Outlook calendar is completely full. With stuff to work on, Nibley City, whatever else, but uh, yeah, I'm. This job has accomplished that to help me find my way to retirement, so I'm celebrating that and thanks for sharing it.
Congratulations.
Fantastic.
Uh, let's see, we've got uh, we've got the Utah League of Cities and Towns coming up, so we'll coordinate rides and stuff on that, so. Anything else from anybody? Justin, oh, yeah. See, see, this is my problem. Justin, tell us what you want us to hear.
I just appreciate you letting me join remotely and thanks staff for taking care of things without me. Guys uh don't even need me. Work.
Yeah, I there's no second on that. Dies for lack of a second.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Appreciate everybody.
If there's no objection, we.